I'd like to open the San Rafael City Council meeting of Monday, May 6th, 2019, and ask where the colors to be presented. I'll ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Before we, excuse me, before we start this evening's meeting, I have a short statement, which is, before we begin, I would like to announce that tonight's city council meeting will include Spanish-language translations provided by certified translator, Oscar Artejo. The translator will provide simultaneous translation beginning at the beginning of tonight's meeting and ending following item 6A. With that, we will, or I will ask the city attorney if there was, I apologize. I won't ask the city attorney, since we did not meet in closed session. We'll move on to time for public expression. This is an opportunity for, for any of you to address us this evening for three minutes on items that are not on this evening's agenda. We won't be able to take action on those items because they're not on this evening's agenda, but we would nevertheless be interested in hearing your, your points for our consideration, perhaps at a later date. Keep in mind, if you're here for an agenda item, this would not be the time that you'd want to speak, but let's wait until that agenda item is presented. So with that, I'd like to start with Catherine de Silva-John. Good evening, and we'd like to talk about carbon offset, I understand.
Hi, it's Catherine de Silva-Jane.
Jane, sorry.
Well, thanks, first of all, thank you all, each of you, and also the community, for the work you do to have a wonderful city here. I briefly want to say that we've done a lot of work on looking at how to, how we can be better stewards of the community and with environmental and cutting down our emissions. But I would also like to emphasize that a great deal of what we do, there's a cost for what we're doing, for everything, so much of what we do, and that is the, the carbon that's going into the atmosphere. And we don't see it, and I would like, like us to consider doing, paying some carbon offsets using, using the purchase of trees, et cetera, et cetera. There's so many, but, but there, this, I have a paper here from Reverend Douglas Olds, who is with the Marin Interfaith Climate Action, and we are very much considering these carbon offsets. I would like to leave it here and for your consideration for future action.
Thank you. You can present that to our city clerk, if you would, please. I just want to take one quick timeout. Lindsay, are we okay with translation and hearings? Okay, good, thank you. Anyone else wish to address us on items that are not on this evening's agenda? Yes, ma'am, please come out. Identify yourself, if you would. I previously said, three minutes, we actually limit this section to two minutes, so I stand corrected.
Don't give her three minutes, huh? I just have a couple of quick announcements, thanks. The sign-in cards were, had disappeared when I arrived. I guess they, they've done that in two rounds this week. First, I think you'd enjoy knowing that your letter to Jared Huffman, your December letter, is still traveling. Just this last week, I had a request for it from an Arinda attorney. Arindas in the process of revising or updating their telecom policy. And a few days before that, a request, well, actually a communique from Ashland, Oregon, so leaders are waving it about up there. And this is, this has just been ongoing. Second item, next Wednesday, May 15th, there'll be an event on the Plaza, a 5G educational assembly. Its focus is on children, on protecting children, keeping our children safe. As we all know, children are especially vulnerable to radiation harm. This event is part of a national 5G educational event initiated by Americans for Responsible Technology, so our event here is just one of hundreds of similar activities that'll be taking place across the nation. Ours will feature a few speakers, including a couple of Marin physicians and probably the director of the California Brain Tumor Association. It will, there will be informational signs and free tables of free information. In the process of securing the permit for the Plaza, I had the pleasure of a couple of exchanges with Brian Auger, so I've met yet another pleasant, helpful San Rafael staffer. Thank you. And thank you for making available a hospitable, appropriate place like the Plaza for a gathering, a meaningful gathering of this kind. Thanks.
And thanks for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public expression time in terms of city manager's report. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have three brief updates, announcements tonight. I'll try to go quickly, because I know there's a lot on our agenda. The first is that there's a lot going on as it relates to wildfire prevention, and I just wanted to talk about a few of the things related to that. The first is that the city council has a wildfire ad hoc subcommittee of Mayor Phillips and Councilmember Bushy, and they met for the first time last week with the Community Wildfire Advisory Committee, the first seven members. It's on your agenda tonight. Item 4D is appointing those first seven members. And then, we've been calling for apps for a while, they're due on May 10th at 5:00 PM for the remaining eight members of the wildfire action committee. I just realized, we're translating, so I'm gonna slow down a little bit. In addition to that, there was on Saturday, this past Saturday on May 4th, there was a Marin wildfire forum, and Deputy Chief Bob Sinnett was there and talked about defensible space and our action plan. That was the meeting that Supervisor Rice was instrumental in setting up. And then this Wednesday, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, at our community center on B Street, Supervisor Sears has been instrumental in assisting a firestorm and wildfire climate workshop that's happening from 7:00 to 9:00. In addition to all of those things, there is a lot of work going on at the county level, County of Marin, with the Marin jurisdictions, including the city of San Rafael and the County of Marin, talking about the countywide approach, the grand jury response, which is, the grand jury just came out with their report recently. So it's gonna be a very active, it's been a very active 2018, it's gonna be a very, very active 2019 when it comes to wildfire prevention and lots of different ways for the community to get involved. On a second topic, we, our downtown design charrette is kicking off this week. This is a process that will go from Wednesday, May 8th, through Saturday, May 11th, and it's to develop the master plan for downtown. There's a whole host of different activities that are taking place during that time, but in general, people will be spending time on the, creating the downtown plan, design guidelines, parking and transportation, public space improvements, zoning, and even strategies to increase affordable housing and reducing displacement. So there's all sorts of very interesting topics related to our downtown. I'll just call out a couple of the things that our community may be interested in attending. The opening presentation is at whistle stop, and that's on this Wednesday evening. And then it's bracketed by an opening presentation and then a closing presentation on Saturday morning at whistle stop at 10:00 AM. The opening presentation is at 7:00 PM. In between those two things, there are open studios at the, was a former jewelry store next to Scandinavian Designs, where the team is kinda taking over, filling it with architects and planners and engineers, and working with the community, who's able to stop in open, open hours, which is much of Thursday and Friday, and provide input to all of those different topics that I just mentioned. There'll be a midpoint, what they're calling a midpoint pinup of the ideas that were developed to date on Thursday at 5:00 PM. So it's a series of events leading up to the closing presentation on Saturday morning at, at 10:00 at whistle stop. And then just lastly, very quickly, I'll have more information on this topic at our next city council meeting on May 20th, but we were notified by SMART last week that they needed to determine, last week, they were kind of at a go-no-go point of whether they were ready to start the construction that would close for a period of time, a weekend, one weekend on Second Street and one weekend on Third Street. And they made the decision that they are ready to move forward with that. So again, I'll have more information at the next meeting, but the Second Street, they're looking at the June 1st, 2nd, actually starting the evening late on Friday, May 31st, and going through Sunday, June 2nd, and then moving the next weekend, which would be June 7, 8, 9, for Third Street. So it kind of falls into the category of good news, bad news. The bad news is that there'll be a period of disruption for those two weekends. The good news is that this is what needs to take place to deliver the train to Larkspur. And Matt Stevens, who is the Community Outreach Coordinator for SMART, is putting together an outreach plan and will be getting all that information out this week. So as soon as SMART makes that information available, we'll also be sending it out to all of our channels as well. And I know our Public Works Director, Bill Guerin, has already started that, even without all the information, with the Chamber and BID and some of the neighborhood groups trying to let them know that this is coming. So just wanted to let you know, as far as in the planning ahead category, that that's coming up, the last weekend in May, first weekend in June, and then the second weekend in June. Thank you.
Thanks for that, and speaking of planning ahead, as the Chair of SMART, I'm gonna be away those two weekends, so if you wanna reach me, you're gonna just have to wait. That's gonna be fun. Ninety thousand cars a day, so bear with us. Also, you may want to mention that we have an event in the downtown on Saturday, Jim, which, Made Madness, it's always a special.
You know, I had that on my, in my notes, actually, when I was talking about the report out on Saturday for the charrette. They're gonna finish noon, and the reason why they want to finish by noon is because Made Madness starts at noon, and they're gonna post all of the designs in the, in the windows of that building, so people could see what's been happening during the charrette period. So Made Madness is noon to 6:00, and the parade is, starts at 5:00 PM.
Right, thank you very much. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Items 4A through 4I, gonna hold two items. They are 4C and 4D, and any others?
I.
John, I. I, anyone else? Should mention, while I'm shuffling here, Mayor Beth and I both attended the, the presentation Saturday on wildfire by the county, and it was, it was well done, I thought. Consent calendar will be covered with a single motion, and I would first entertain any comment by public with regard to any of these items, with the exception of the three we're holding. Any comments from public? Seeing none, we'll come back for a motion with regard to these items.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, subject to those being withheld.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye, those matters carry 4, 5-0. 400 Upper Toyon, I have just a very brief comment, I just want perhaps some clarification with regard to the amount that we'll be receiving from the resident to accommodate the, the re-characterization of the residence itself. That is, it will be in Ross rather than San Rafael city limits. We have reached an agreement, assuming it's passed upon this evening, with the resident, and I just want to make it clear, particularly for the council, the amount that the resident will be paying to San Rafael is $95,000. That's in the report, but just to be clear, the way I, we calculated that was that's the present value of that future stream of property tax payments in perpetuity, discounted at 5% with a, with an inflationary factor of 2% equal to, to property tax increases. So that's, that, that calculation is the 95,000 that, that you'll see in the report, so just for clarification. Any other comments or questions? Anyone from the public wish to address us on this item? Close and come back for discussion or perhaps a motion.
Move approval of item C.
And second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I am at our carries 5-0, turning to wildfire advisory committee. Kate asked for this item.
Yes, you know, thank you, Mayor. And actually, the city manager already brought up the items I wanted to be sure to highlight for the community, and that is, the committee has now been formed, and half of the members have been selected by the subcommittee, but the other half, we are looking for community members. So if you can go online to our website and just type in wildfire committee, and then the application will come up, it will help the city put together the ordinances that will support the work that we're going to do around fire prevention. And in addition, you also mentioned the grand jury report, you can find that in the Marin County website, so two big pieces of information to support what we're doing here.
And just one slight clarification. Frankly, I selected seven members of the community that I, that know pretty well, have a profound interest in this area, including two of our fire commissioners. That makes up seven. Mayor Beth and I sit on that committee, will be chairing it, and the other eight will come from the applicants, as Kate mentioned, from the community. Mayor Beth and I will be selecting the, the eight from the number of applicants that we have to expedite, because we're anxious to move this forward. And we have an excellent input from, from our staff, Quinn Gardner in particular, and the chief, so we're making real good progress on this. And you'll hear and see more about it as we proceed. We're gonna have community outreach meetings, of which there'll be at least three, maybe more, but at least three, so you'll be able to provide some, some comments and helpful direction, I'm sure, as we proceed on this matter. With that, is there a motion regarding this item?
I move that we approve item D.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm at our carries 5-0, and now we'll turn to item I, 2018-19 restriping project. John?
Yeah, and I apologize, this seems like a very kind of a small issue in, in, in the vast majority of things, but there was a point that, that stuck out to me that I had previously, previously discussed with, with Bill on, one of the items in the project is the thermoplastic green striping of a bike lane from Second to Bellum along Anderson for the, for the tune of $57,000. And while it is less than 10% of the overall project cost, with the amount of money that we're spending on the multi-use path that parallels this projected bike lane that's already there, just not, doesn't have the green, the green paint on the ground or thermoplastic on the ground, I'm just wondering, A, is it necessary? And B, since we haven't had that, is there any, is there any indication that putting the green on the ground will either increase safety? Have we had any incidents there that would, that would make us feel that we need to put the green striping on the ground? And if the multi-use path is gonna be up and running within the next couple of years, and the amount of cost that's associated with that, is this, is this the best use of $5,000, $10,000, or in this case, $57,000? So that's the cost.
If I could, I'd like to expand on that just for a second. We know that the, the multi-use path in that section is partially funded, substantially but not completely. And so my question would be, and thanks for raising the question, John, my question would be, if we are able to, to build a section that's not yet funded, we're able to do that within a reasonable timeframe, let's say this year, how does that impact or influence the decision?
So I'll, I'll start with, is it necessary? It is not a requirement of the MUTCD to have green paint for a bike path. We have to designate the bike path in some way. People use sharos where you're sharing the bicycles and cars together, so that's a very common use of signage for bicycles where they are sharing the road with automobiles, but it's not an absolute necessity to have green paint in those areas. The reason we're doing it is because it was a commitment that we made to the biking community. We asked SMART to do green paint at the crossing of Anderson, so we have started, so to speak, the green paint there now. They, they've done theirs in thermo, and we are trying to do thermo as well. We believe it is a safety feature for bicyclists. This is a designated bike path in San Rafael. Conversation earlier was about the, the multiple paths through San Rafael for automobiles, for pedestrians, for bicycles. This is another bike path through San Rafael that will be used by bike riders who are more confident in their bike riding. So they'll typically, a bike rider who is a commuter bike rider, riding with some speed, will ride in the street rather than on a multi-use path, which is by definition a shared path between pedestrians, bicycles, and other, other modes of transit, maybe skateboards or, you know, different things, strollers, those kinds of things that are on a bike path that make it kind of a weave to go through, and bicycle riders who are confident and can keep up with traffic will be using the street. So we think it is a, a, a good use of funds. We think it's essential to do it in thermo rather than painting, because the whole point of the, the contract in general is to do the thermo that lasts for up to 10 years rather than paint that lasts for a year, a couple of years, and then you have to come back and redo it. If we were to paint it green, and again, it's not absolutely necessary, we would be, then refreshing it on a regular basis once it's in place, and we think it's appropriate to do it with the thermoplastic rather than paint if we decide to do it at all, and we believe it's a, a good location for this, this green safe bike path.
So as we go forward with, if, if the goal is for the city to have more bike paths and, and more access, is it, is it in our plan to do more of these green paths? What are we looking at from, you know, over the next couple of years with this? And I would imagine the cost would obviously increase with, with this piece as well? Or is this gonna be a single segment, and we won't be doing a whole lot of other green paths over the next couple of years, or five or 10 years? Just, just kind of get an idea, is this gonna be kind of a standalone thing? Because to your question, I mean, to your point of the, the experienced bicyclists that will be using this rather than the multi-use path, are those the ones that will most benefit from green on the ground, or is it more from a safety issue from folks that aren't as experienced and they're gonna use the multi-use path? I don't want to make, you know, too much of this, but it is a lot of money, and for the fact that we're, we're spending a lot more money on a multi-use path, that one of the questions that SMART had posed to us when we were looking at doing the multi-use path and being asked to fund it ourselves, or find funding of ourselves, was that they had mentioned that there was no guarantee in the Measure Q language that there would be a dedicated multi-use path, that as long as there was connective, connectivity between the stations, i.e. the bike path on Anderson to, to get to, to Larkspur, that was all that was required under the measure. So we went ahead and pushed forward on the multi-use path to a large cost, and now we're going back and spending additional money on this path, when, in my opinion, we, if that was gonna provide the need to fit Measure Q, $57,000 is much better than eight and a half, nine million. So I, I'm not in favor of, of this piece in there. The other striping components obviously need to be done, but this component of that, I just don't see the necessary at this point.
I'd be curious about other communities. Are you finding, you're, you're the expert, are you finding that other communities are doing this sort of thing, or not?
It, it's very common, and we are intending to continue to put green thermo in, in specific locations in San Rafael. On the, the sort of heavily-used streets, it is a, it is a safe marker. You can box out areas for bicyclists to park or to stop at a stop sign that's separate from the cars. The green paint is really a useful safety tool for bicyclists, and we are intending to use it in other places. Certainly, other communities are using it. As, as close as San Anselmo has quite a lot of green paint.
So cyclists will be aware of what this signals to them, and therefore, perhaps a, a safety feature. Other comments?
Andrew?
Can't help myself, but if we're committing ourselves to using green thermoplastic paint for bike paths going forward, do we have a program, or a schedule, rather, whereby we will complete these, this new striping? And my concern, of course, is a liability one. If we embark on this particular project, but we don't put similar striping in place elsewhere and accidents occur, we might be accused, I'm afraid, of having inconsistent markings that confuse cyclists or drivers or both.
Again, this is a safety enhancement, it's not a requirement of the MUTCD. We do have sharos in the streets where we, we have shared bike paths. This is an enhancement. We intend to, to continue to do more enhancements to our bike facilities all over San Rafael. I can't tell you that I have a schedule of when all those things are gonna be put in place, but we do have plans on a number of major streets to do improvements like this.
Other questions? Question, Mayor Beth?
I can provide testimony that green bike paths are the norm in San Francisco, and that's, that's sort of the modern view of where bicyclists are, and particularly in this area where we have bicycles near motor vehicles. The more clearly that's marked, the safer it is for everyone. So this is, while we can't afford to do this the entire city on, with, with one go, that this is a step in the, in the right direction, and I'd be delighted to move this item when ready.
And that'll be just a moment. Anyone from the public wish to address us on this item? Seeing no one, we'll come back, and Mayor Beth, be good.
I, I move item 4I.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Collin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
No.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm at our carries 4-1. We'll now move on to a special presentation, of which we have two this evening, Supporting Public Service Recognition Week and National Police Week, and also Police Department Awards Ceremony. So, if you'll join me at the podium.
Good evening, Council and members of the public. My name's Christina Lilovich, the Assistant City Manager. No, you're doing great. I'm just introducing the recipient of the award for you. I'd like to introduce Shabani Nug, who's our Director of Employee Experience and Culture, which is a fancy way of saying a Human Resources Director. I'd like her to come on down and accept the award on the behalf of the city.
Thank you, Christine. Hi, how are you? How are you this evening? I have something special for you.
Wonderful.
And you and, and everyone else within our, our city employee. This is a resolution by the City, City Council supporting Public Service Recognition Week, May 5th through the 11th. And I'm gonna read part of this, if it's okay. Public Service Recognition Week is celebrate, oh, I'm sorry. Celebrated since 1985 and is a time set aside to honor federal, state, and local government employees. Whereas, public employees take not only jobs, but oaths and commitments to serve their communities in professional, compassionate, and creative ways, and without these public servants at all levels, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. I'm gonna skip down a little bit. Sorry. Several whereses, and the final is, our state, our, excuse me, our city, state, and nation are deeply indebted to the women and men who devote themselves to public service and make incalculable contributions to our city's quality of life. Thank you so much for accepting this on behalf of all of our employees.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so excited to be here this evening and meet all of you and, and council, very nice to meet you, and even more honored to accept this award on behalf of Public Service Week. I can say that I've just been here for a short couple of weeks, but I, I've gotten to know the community and, and all my colleagues, and it's just been an honor seeing just their daily contributions to the community, their ideas, their time, their energy. daily contributions to the community, their ideas, their time, their energy, and more importantly, their hearts and their minds that they put into the daily work that they do. And so I'm very honored to accept this on their behalf, and thank you very much.
And next, we have a resolution of the City Council in recognition of National Police Week 2019. And I, oh, I was going to invite you up, there you are. This is a special time, and I'll read a little bit of this as well. Congress and President of the United States has designated May 15, 2019, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and May 12 to 18, 2019, as National Police Week. Members of the San Rafael Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all of those residing in or visiting San Rafael, and it is important that all residents know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of the police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. The men and women of the San Rafael Police Department unceasingly provide vital public services. Going on to, furthermore, we call upon the residents of San Rafael to recognize May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duties, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is one of my favorite times of the year, and it's one of the most reflective times of the year. As the mayor mentioned, he didn't mention this part, but I will, a little history. In 1962, President Kennedy designated Peace Officer Memorial Day on May 15, and since then, throughout our country, we've honored the service and sacrifice of the people you see in this room, the people who came before them, and the people who will come after. We are not, no longer here. We are honored to serve this community, and we do it willingly, and knowing that any day we could give our lives for this community, and we willingly do that. And we're honored to serve you, and a little later, you're going to see a little awards ceremony that we do, and I'm glad you're here. I know you're really not here for that, but I hope that you will be happy that you were here for that. Thank you.
I want to just briefly comment beyond the type. We as a community, and I think most, if not all, of us recognize the importance provided by our police department and other public safety, but certainly this evening in recognition of the public safety officers that serve our city, we're very, very fortunate. They're extremely professional, they're dedicated. I am continually impressed, from the top down, certainly including the top, but throughout the organization, again, as a community, and perhaps on behalf of the community, I couldn't be more pleased with the department and the services you provide, so thank you so much for that. My fellow members want to say something?
All right, let's get our picture.
Yeah, let's get a picture. Too many things going on.
A lot of stuff going on.
So thank you, chief, and I think you have the next section, right?
All right, thank you. So each year, we do fantastic things every day in our police department, and some of them are just what we do, and they're not noticed, and sometimes I find out about things we did, and why didn't someone tell me that? That's above and beyond what we normally do. So we have an awards committee where anybody in the department can nominate one of their colleagues for something extraordinary they did during the past year, and the committee meets, and there's different levels of awards, and vote on who is going to get those awards for the year. We have tons of stuff. We have, obviously, a lot of folks here today, and since I don't really like speaking on the microphone very much, I always have a lieutenant do the awards ceremony for us. So Lieutenant Scott Everly is honored to be able to do it today, and here he is.
Yeah, you can make yourself home. Whatever you have to do.
No pressure, okay. Okay, so what I'll do is I'll call the officers, sergeants, and corporals, come up to the front of the room. If you are a friend or a family member that is here for them, please feel free to come up, take pictures, there'll be time to do that. So, without further ado, I'm going to start off with a letter of commendations. The first one is to Sergeant Wanda Spoletta, who unfortunately cannot be here tonight, but I still felt that you guys should hear her story. On Monday, December 3, 2018, Sergeant Wanda Spoletta oversaw the Team 3 night shift patrol. Team 3 was running short one person due to a last-minute sick call, and this put Sergeant Spoletta's team at only five officers to patrol the entire city. At approximately 1,800 hours, San Rafael Police Dispatch received a call about a person who had just been shot at Albert J. Borro Community Center. Officers responded and discovered a deceased male in the driver's seat of a vehicle with the suspect still at large. Sergeant Spoletta quickly took command of the scene, called for mutual aid, and coordinated a perimeter to make sure the crime scene was preserved for the detectives and the CSI unit. Sergeant Spoletta's knowledge and leadership immediately became apparent as she was able to facilitate her team during this stressful situation. The San Rafael Police Department gratefully acknowledges Sergeant Spoletta for her professional performance and awards her this letter of commendation. Can I please have Officer Phil Melodia, Officer James Dooley, Officer Carl Lumen, and Officer Cheryl Condratiff come to the front, please? Okay, on November 5, 2018, at 1:33 a.m., the San Rafael Police Department received a mutual aid request from the Marin County Sheriff's Office to respond to an active shooter incident at Helen Vine Detox Center on Smith Ranch Road. When SRPD officers arrived at the scene, they found MCSO deputies treating multiple gunshot victims. One victim had died at the scene, and two others were transported by ambulance with life-threatening injuries. At the time San Rafael Police arrived, there was suspicion that the shooter could still be in the building or hiding in the area. SRPD officers assisted with scene security, cleared the buildings, confirmed identification of the residents present while providing them with comfort and support. It was later determined that the suspect had escaped prior to San Rafael officers' arrival by stealing one of the victim's cars from the parking lot. He was eventually caught and arrested two days later. The department recognizes Corporal Lila Gavlick, who is unfortunately not here tonight, acting as a field training officer to Officer Cheryl Condratiff, who donned their active shooter gear and provided cover to the paramedics who were treating the victims. They were also assigned to comfort the residents who were sequestered in a safe location. Officer James Dooley, who immediately donned his active shooter gear and took up a spot to the rear of the main building to maintain a perimeter, he also assisted in identifying the residents and making sure they were in a safe area. Officer Phil Melodia, who immediately donned his active shooter gear and took up a position to the southeast corner of the main building with his canine partner, Iris. And Officer Carl Lumen immediately donned his active shooter gear and was assigned to assist the MCSO with clearing the main building of the suspect. Officer Lumen took up a perimeter at the northwest location of the main building. The San Rafael Police Department gratefully acknowledges their professional performance and awards them with the letter of commendation. He's working tonight. I think he's here. There he is. On April 23, 2018, at 6:45 p.m., officers were dispatched to a home on Point San Pedro Road for a burglary in progress. The suspect was seen removing property from the victim's garage. Officer Adams and Corporal Bellamy arrived on scene and advised that they located a male inside a locked eight-foot wrought iron perimeter fence, for which the officers could not get through. With no way of accessing the suspect's location, Officer Adams tried to negotiate with the male suspect through the wrought iron fence. After a short interaction, the suspect ran behind the victim's house and jumped into the canal waters. The suspect began thrashing in the water and shouting for help. Corporal Bellamy, in full police uniform, gave chase, defeated the eight-foot wrought iron fence, and jumped into the water to save, in order to try to save the suspect's life. Corporal Bellamy searched for several minutes in the freezing and deep water to try to save the suspect's life. Unfortunately, the water was too deep, and Corporal Bellamy was unable to locate the suspect, who had sunk to the bottom of the canal and drowned. The San Rafael Police Department gratefully acknowledged Corporal Bellamy for his courage and his professionalism during this incident, and awards him the letter of commendation. He recently retired, and he was an outstanding officer, and I'd like to share with you a story that happened in 2018. On July 11, 2018, San Rafael Police Officers received a report of a man destroying his apartment at the corner of 4th Street and Lincoln Avenue. Officers Mark LaPlante, Joe Kamins, and Carl Lumen found the suspect on the balcony of his apartment, who appeared to be under the influence and bleeding profusely from his hands and feet. The suspect had torn his apartment apart and throw random items over the balcony, putting residents and the public at risk. When officers approached him, the suspect jumped onto the neighbor's balcony and then climbed up onto the balcony wall where he stood there three floors up from the ground. Fearing that the suspect was planning to jump, Officer LaPlante grabbed him by the pants and pulled him back onto the balcony floor in safety. After a brief struggle on the balcony floor, the suspect was taken into custody without further injury. The San Rafael Police Department gratefully acknowledges Officer LaPlante for his professional performance and awards this letter of commendation. Can I have Officer Travis Ruggles come to the front? In the early morning hours of June 7, 2018, San Rafael Police were dispatched to a call of a burning vessel at the San Rafael Yacht Harbor. Several officers, along with the San Rafael Fire Department, rushed to the scene to find a boat engulfed in flames. While the firefighters were actively trying to extinguish the fire, Officer Ruggles saw a dog huddled on the boat. Other than the dog, nobody else was aboard the vessel. Officer Ruggles commandeered a small boat and paddled over to the distressed dog. Officer Ruggles was able to calm the dog down, who was barking and growling at him. Officer Ruggles, risking injury to himself, grabbed the dog and lowered it into his boat, and as he paddled back towards the wharf, the boat that the dog had just been rescued from was completely engulfed in flames. The dog only sustained blistering on his pads due to the heat, but was happily reunited with his owner. Officer Ruggles saved this dog's life. The San Rafael Police Department gratefully acknowledges Officer Ruggles for his professional performance during this incident and award this letter of commendation. Okay, big group. Can I please have Corporal Rhonda Cordero, Corporal Rob Cleland, Corporal Aaron Piambo, Officer Maldonado, is he here? Officer Rantisi, who's not here, Officer Blake Delzel, Officer James Dooley, Sergeant Todd Behringer, sorry, Todd. And Lieutenant, now Chief, Alan Piambo, who unfortunately cannot be with us tonight. On Monday evening, December 3, 2018, San Rafael Police Officers responded to a call of shots fired in the parking lot of Albert J. Borro Community Center. Officers arrived and discovered a deceased male who had been shot at close range while sitting in the driver's seat of the vehicle. Based on witness accounts, the suspect was at large and considered armed and dangerous. The crime scene, which was cordoned off and preserved for the department's investigations units to take over the case. The investigators, Corporal Rhonda Cordero, Corporal Robert Cleland, Corporal Aaron Piambo, Officer Carlos Maldonado, Officer Gino Rantisi, Officer Blake Delzel, and Officer James Dooley, worked into the early morning hours of Tuesday after they had completed their routine 10-hour shift on Monday. At 2:00 a.m. in the morning, Tuesday morning, as many of them had left work to get some sleep, a new lead had developed that significantly impacted the case. Everyone quickly returned to work, developing further leads and identified the suspect. On Wednesday morning, approximately 44 hours after the initial call, the suspect was taken into custody without incident. Investigators served a search warrant at the suspect's home and gathered more evidence well into the following week, which led to the arrest of an accomplice. The investigations unit supervisors, Lieutenant Alan Piambo and Sergeant Todd Behringer, are commended for their leadership and supervision throughout this investigation. There was an overwhelming amount of information to keep organized and many, many leads to follow up. Their discussions involving investigative strategies and delegation of resources while maintaining overall organization of this investigation was very impressive. The San Rafael Police Department gratefully acknowledged the entire investigation unit at the San Rafael Police Department for their outstanding professional performance and awards them the Unit Conduct Citation. The next award we are going to give out is the Meritorious Conduct Citation to Rebecca Kuga, who unfortunately cannot be with us, I think she's in Palm Springs and some really nice weather, but I'd like to tell you her story. Rebecca Kuga was hired as the Youth Service Bureau, YSB Coordinator for the San Rafael Police Department in 2006. Her duties included the management of interns on a yearly basis. She was also responsible for the management and disposition of the cases submitted to the YSB from citations issued by officers to juveniles for lower-level offenses. Rebecca also coordinated and managed Camp Chance. This included planning and executing a fundraising event in support of the camp and the continued fostering of relationships in the community to ensure financial viability of the program. Additionally, Rebecca launched the Parent Project Program to assist parents who are facing challenges and rearing children in San Rafael. Rebecca served on the crisis negotiation team, which is deployed to negotiate with members of the public who are experiencing crisis and high-risk situations. Rebecca participated in the department's peer support program, whose mission is to provide counseling and support and confidence for members of the organization who are in need. Rebecca's level of care and concern for her coworkers, the community of San Rafael, and specifically the children of San Rafael, should serve as an example to those around her. In all of her roles, Rebecca represented the San Rafael Police Department with the utmost professionalism and genuine concern for the community. The San Rafael Police Department gratefully acknowledges Rebecca Kuga for her professional performance and awards this Meritorious Conduct Citation. Can I please have Corporal James Bellamy come back up to the front and Officer Michael This is an award for a lifesaving. On the evening of March 27th, 2018, Corporal James Bellamy and Officer Michael Garrison responded to a residence in San Rafael on a report of a 52-year-old female who was unresponsive with shallow breathing. While en route, Officer Garrison was advised that the woman's daughter was performing CPR. The officers arrived within minutes and encountered a woman lying face-up on the living room floor. Officer Garrison immediately took her vital signs while noting her breathing was constricted and had a faint pulse. He was notified by the woman's daughter that her mother was a heroin addict. Officer Garrison checked the woman's arms and noted fresh needle marks indicating the recent usage. Corporal Bellamy arrived on scene with his medical bag. Officer Garrison retrieved a vial of Narcan from the bag, and Corporal Bellamy administered the Narcan, and the woman reacted almost immediately, regaining consciousness and her breathing returned to normal. San Rafael Fire Department arrived on scene and transported the woman to Marin General Hospital for continued treatment. Corporal Bellamy and Officer Garrison's professional actions played a significant role in saving this woman's life. The San Rafael Police Department gratefully acknowledges Corporal Bellamy and Officer Garrison's performance in this incident and awards this lifesaving citation. Okay, this will be the last award of the night. Can I please have Officer Mark Hadeen, Marine Auxiliary John McGinnis, and Rob Sinclair to the front? So while they're walking up, I was at my desk earlier today, and I found this photograph. Just note the date. Okay, here we go. On Sunday, May 20th, 2018, at about 3:30 PM, Reserve Officer Mark Hadeen and the crew of his Mission City were on patrol in the San Rafael Bay when Marine Auxiliary Rob Sinclair noticed a capsized sailboat south of the Marin Islands. Due to the 20 mile-an-hour winds and the choppy waves, the sailboat struggled to right itself only to capsize again and again. One person was on the boat while another person was floating in the below 55-degree water. The person in the water was slowly drifting away from the sailboat and our Mission City. The name of our boat is the Mission City. While Officer Hadeen expertly maneuvered the boat to get close to the victim, a line was tossed out to the person in order to save his life. Auxiliary members John McGinnis and Rob Sinclair had to lift the victim from the water as he was going into shock due to exposure. Once onboard, the victim was shaking so violently, he could not even give his name. He was taken inside the cabin of the Mission City, where his wet clothing was removed and warmed himself with the blankets and the cabin heater. The occupant of the sailboat was able to take down the sails, and the crew of the Mission City towed it back to Locklomen Harbor. The lifesaving actions of Officer Mark Hadeen and the Marine Auxiliary members Rob Sinclair and John McGinnis are consistent with the finest traditions of the San Rafael Police Department. And for those reasons, the San Rafael Police Department gratefully acknowledges Officer Mark Hadeen and Marine Auxiliary members Rob Sinclair and John McGinnis' performance in this incident and award them the lifesaving award. That's it, that's it for the awards, but we're not done, yes.
I'd like to have Lieutenant Lisa Holton, Corporal Alex Home, and Corporal, excuse me, Sergeant Alex Home, I obviously did this before he got promoted, and Corporal Blake Delzel, come up, come forward please. So as they're coming forward, as you can kind of tell, our Police Department has a structure of rank, and it goes from Officer on up to Chief, and there's a bunch in between, and the bunch in between do most of the supervision of the Police Department, and it's a very important, and these are very important people, and they have very important tasks that they do. So they were all promoted on March 1st, is that right, to their current positions, and I want to tell you a little bit about them because they serve you every day. So we're going to start with Lisa Holton. She started with us in 2000 and has worked in Investigations, Professional Standards, Community Engagement, and many more assignments. She has a Bachelor's Degree from the University of San Francisco and is just completing her Master's Degree at the University of San Diego. She and her husband Marcus have been married 20 years, and they have two daughters who are here with them, with her today, Marissa and Emily. There they are. We've got Sergeant Alex Home in the middle here. Alex started with us in 2003. He has worked in Investigations, Footbeat, and is a Field Training Officer. And I would, it would be an understatement to say that we kind of rely on him for his IT expertise, he's fantastic. He received his Bachelor's Degree from the University of Phoenix. Alex and his husband Chris live in Marin County and have two dogs, Cody and Bosel. All right. Lastly, Corporal Blake Delzel. Blake started with us pretty recently, in 2016. He had prior experience with Santa Rosa PD and then went to the private sector as an investigator and realized public service was in his blood, so we were lucky enough to have him come to our department. He's currently working in Investigations. He also mentors our police recruits who attend the Police Academy. He has a Bachelor's Degree from Sonoma State. Blake and his wife Karina live in Marin County. So these are our three new people for that. So as is a tradition, each employee can choose who they have pinned their badge on, and I'd like Lisa to start. It's not easy. All right, good job girls. Congratulations to all three of you. Thank you guys and gals. I have two of our somewhat newer employees that I'd like to come up, Andres and Kevin, if you're around. Are they out there? In the peanut gallery? Okay, here they come. So we have a position called Police Cadet, and it's basically young people who are in college who want to work half-time and they want to understand if they would like to be in public service, specifically law enforcement, and we have a great tradition of, obviously Mark Hadeen's picture, he was a cadet there, Scott was a cadet, we have some great success stories, and these two gentlemen will go far as well, I just want to introduce them to you. Cadet Andres Flores Placencia. Andres started with San Rafael PD in July of 2018. He grew up in San Rafael and is a graduate of Terra Linda High School, and he currently attends Sonoma State. After he completes his education, he would like to become a police officer. He was bilingual in Spanish and English. Okay, this is Cadet Kevin Porter. He is a Dominican student, he's a junior. He started in late 2017, we haven't had one of these in a while. He was a lacrosse player at Dominican, but he's studying hard, hard, hard now, so he's not playing lacrosse anymore, and he's looking forward to becoming a police officer after graduation, even though his dad's a firefighter and is trying to dissuade him. But I'm trying to get to him and say, "Police is where it's at." So welcome both of them to our department. Do you have someone you'd like to pin you?
My dad.
Oh, wonderful. Hi sir, good. His girlfriend Lily would like to come up and pin his badge. She didn't know that. Okay, this is our, this is our last thing, and I think you're going to like it. So, we met a couple of the Marine Auxiliary folks, but they are, the four new folks we have are new to our Marine Auxiliary, and they bring this huge experience, and they're really honored, I believe, to work for you for free on the boat on the weekends with Mark. So can I have Sam, Ian, Rob, and Jim, please come down? And I think I could do it at the same time, we're going to have a swearing-in, I'll tell you about these guys, and then we're going to swear in our two newest Police Canines. Yeah, the dogs do get top billing, I apologize, it can't be helped. Okay, I'm going to introduce, they're not in the right order, Sam, Sam's over there. Sam grew up in San Rafael and worked at his father's local marine repair business on 3rd Street for many years. He's graduated San Rafael High School and graduated from the Marine Maritime Academy with a Bachelor's in Marine Transportation. He is a captain for the Golden Gate Ferry and a relief captain for the San Francisco Fire Department Fireboats. I believe he captains a boat that's worth about $12 million sometimes. He lives in San Rafael with his wife Jacqueline and daughter Fiona. So welcome Sam. Marine Auxiliary Ian Gray. Wow, this is accidental. Ian grew up in Windsor, Ontario, Canada. He has a Bachelor's Degree in Communication from the University of Windsor. He works for Autodesk here in town. He and his wife Lynn live in Marin County and have a son who attends Marin Catholic, and he recently obtained his Boat Captain's License. All right. We have Rob Sinclair, you met earlier. He is a Marin County native who is a graduate of San Rafael High. He has a Bachelor's Degree in Marine Biology from UC Santa Barbara, Jim went there, and two Master's Degrees, one in Business from Golden Gate University, and, nope, I'm going Am I on Rob? Okay, okay, okay. There you go, two Master's Degrees, Golden Gate University, and the other in Continuity Operations from Norwich University Military College of Vermont. Yes, in Norwich, I've been there. Rob is the proud daughter of two daughters, Natalia and Katharina. And we have Jim Taylor next to me. He is a graduate of the United States Naval Academy. He has a degree in Engineering, an eight-year military career, which included officer in charge of a nuclear submarine. Master's Degree in Marketing from Johns Hopkins, works in the medical technology industry. He and his wife live in San Rafael, and they have a daughter, Jamie. Are the Canines out there? Have them come in here. So we have coming in here now is Canine Harry, he'll be the smaller one. He's a Belgian Malinois, he's two years old, he's from Mexico. He and his partner Officer Scolerseo, here they come, started their partnership in March. Next, we're going to have Canine Achilles. He is a three-year-old German Shepherd, also from Mexico. Officer Zach Prakel has been working with Achilles since March. Both dogs are trained in patrol work, narcotics detection, and tracking of human odor. In the future, they will be trained to locate articles of evidence, and kind of an interesting So this is the last, this is the last thing, but this is an important thing. We're going to swear the four Marine Auxiliary folks in, we're going to re-swear the two Canine officers in with their dogs as kind of a symbol of their new partnership, and I believe it or not am a Deputy City Clerk. So, I can really... So, I can really do this. So would you guys face me? And you're gonna have to hold up your right hand, so you're gonna have a hard time with the leash and that. So, we're gonna do the old, say after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you, gentlemen. And you guys have folks to pin your badges? Okay, the folks who are gonna pin their badges can come on down, and then we will, you guys have your badges already? But I have the badges for the dogs, too. Okay. Harry, this is your badge, number 633. Achilles, 634. Harry has seniority. Okay. Yeah. We'll do a quadruple pinning here. There you go. All right. Thank you all very much for your patience and your appreciation of all of our officers and our staff. I really appreciate it. And all PD people, we're going downstairs to get out of the way, and we're gonna have cake. Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Job well done. Thank you so much. We'll just wait for a minute. Well, thank you, everyone. Wasn't that great? You know, that's special for all of us, I think. It's also a very difficult task to follow. But why don't you try?
All right, well, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Andrew Henning, the Director of Homeless Planning and Outreach. Tonight, we are back to discuss renter protection policies that could be adopted by the City of San Rafael. This is a follow-up to the February 4th City Council meeting, where we discussed two potential policies that the city could adopt. In brief, the first is just cause eviction. So with just cause eviction, the idea is that landlords can only end a tenancy for certain predefined reasons, such as failure to pay rent or landlord moving back into the unit. We also discussed mandatory mediation, which is the idea that if a certain triggering event occurs, such as a rent increase, then a tenant or landlord can request a mediation. It's required to participate in the mediation, but the outcome is not required. It's not binding. After the February 4th meeting, the City Council set up an ad hoc renter protection subcommittee, which included the mayor, councilmember McCullough, Supervisor Dennis Redoni from the county, David Levin with legal aid, and then Scott Gerber, a local property owner and real estate agent. I also mentioned at the February meeting that we had initiated-
Andrew, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Could you slow it down just a little bit for our translator? Thank you very much.
I had also mentioned at the February meeting that we had initiated some public outreach at that point. Since then, we've, I think, rounded out a pretty comprehensive attempt to talk to all the stakeholders involved on this issue. Renters in the canal, local advocacy groups, property owners and property management groups. And so I feel pretty confident with what we're bringing forward tonight. Overall, the subcommittee felt like the city should move forward with both just cause eviction and mandatory mediation policies. So I wanted to state that upfront. In our process, we looked to the county of Marin. They've been a local leader on moving forward with renter protection policies in Marin County. But as you saw in the staff report, our subcommittee felt like, after looking at their policies, there were some tweaks that could be made that would actually make for better policies in San Rafael. In the staff report, I laid out a number of the issues that we discussed, both what the county had done, what we considered about, and then what we ultimately were recommending. I'm not gonna go through all of these in my presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to go into more detail. But for tonight, I really wanted to focus on four major policy questions that we had as a subcommittee, and I think it's really the questions that a lot of people in the public are here to discuss tonight. Before I jump into these four questions, there are three things that I'd like you to keep in mind throughout. I felt like these were sort of themes in our discussion that are important with whatever we decide to do as a city. First and foremost, it's important to remember that the city has limited staff and financial capacity to administer these programs. We also asked a question of whether or not there are existing systems or protocols within the city that could make the adoption of these policies easier. And then we also wanted to really drill down to what is the real challenge that we're trying to solve. So first, which units are covered by these policies? So, in the staff report for the first February meeting, I had laid out a variety of the different jurisdictions that have renter protection policies in the Bay Area. Here are 14. This isn't exhaustive, but it has a lot of jurisdictions that are comparable to San Rafael in a lot of ways. As you can see, there's a range from relocation assistance to full-blown rent control and everything kind of in between. So first, in terms of applicability of these policies, I wanted to focus on jurisdictions that actually have something similar to what we're discussing tonight. And when we look at this, we find that most jurisdictions have decided to either have these policies applied to all rental units, or to narrow down to buildings that have two or more units, or three or more units. That seems to be the standard across jurisdictions. In San Rafael, we have 24,000 housing units, and those are occupied 48% by renters. So that's about 11,500 housing units occupied by renters. So a pretty substantial amount of our community rents. As I mentioned at the February meeting, if the council were to focus on properties that had just three or more units, we would actually still be covering about 68% of San Rafael's renters. So a pretty significant amount of our renters are in multifamily housing stock. Next, we talked about what actually triggers mediation. So again, in most communities, it's a rent increase of some sort. If we look at the various programs that I'd highlighted before, you can see that communities have opted for anywhere from 5% to 10% in terms of if there's a rent increase of more than that amount over a 12-month period, then the mediation would happen. If you look at all the units that are covered in these jurisdictions with the percentage of the threshold, the weighted average in the Bay Area is 6%. Of course, just because that's the average, that doesn't mean it's necessarily gonna work for our community. And so our subcommittee spent a good amount of time trying to actually drill down to what is the core challenge that we're trying to address in San Rafael. Yes, there have been rent increases over the past few years, but the pace of those rent increases has been slowing down, and actually last year, they were flat. So what we really talked about was the fact that, both in our subcommittee, and I got this from a lot of the community stakeholders that I talked to, was that a lot of the headlines have been about a few key property owners that have raised rates very significantly on their properties, especially after acquisition, and perhaps that's really something that we should be focused on. The next question that we talked about is data, especially around evictions. So you'll remember, in February, I showed you this chart. So if you're a landlord and you initiate an eviction, the first step is a 30- or 60-day notice. After that, you would pursue a notice to quit, and after that, you'd pursue an unlawful detainer. Currently, the only data available in our community is about the unlawful detainers. If you look at this data, it's actually been on the decline, really, for the past seven years. What's important to note, though, is that it's not clear if there's any correlation to unlawful detainers with the 30- to 60-day notice, because many people could get this eviction notice, but it never gets to an unlawful detainer. It's also not clear what the multiple above the unlawful detainer is. So if there are 300 unlawful detainers, it's not clear how many 30- or 60-day notices there actually were. So to address this, many communities have created a data collection protocol to actually try to better understand rates of eviction. San Rafael's a little bit unique, because we actually already have something of a registry through our business license program. So any property that has three or more units currently has to have a business license on file, and we collect a lot of the information that the registries have been seeking to collect. The final question is really around cost. So, these programs, if you enact the full shebang, the mediation, the just cause, there is a fair amount to it, especially upfront. Staff receives phone calls from the public, trying to better understand the program. There's marketing collateral, public meetings. But the most costly component, without a doubt, is the mediation program itself. So if you look at different jurisdictions, there are essentially two models. One is a third-party contractor. So the county of Marin contracts with the district attorney's office to provide mediation services. So if someone qualifies under the county's program, they would actually go to the district attorney to get that serviced. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the city has reached out to the district attorney's office, and they have quoted us a rate of $400 per mediation. That could certainly be negotiated, but that was the initial cost. Another model is to create an actual rent review board. So earlier tonight, you were doing interviews for a community board or commission. So the same idea would apply here. Some jurisdictions have set up a standing commissioner board comprised of landlords, renters, and a neutral independent person, so basically a homeowner. And they would meet every month, and as cases arose, they would come in for a mediation. If you look at all the different jurisdictions, you can see it's actually pretty split. It's about 50% use a contractor, 50% create the rent review board. I'm happy to go into more detail about the decisions and talking to these other cities. But the bigger thing I wanted to kind of alert your attention to is, when we're thinking about projecting costs for these programs, previously I've given you a somewhat unscientific projection in terms of what do we kind of know from the public, from the media, about rent increases in our community? But what I did tonight was, if you take the number of units in these communities that are covered by mediation, and then you take the actual number of cases that have come in, you get a case-to-unit ratio. So basically, for a given number of units, how many cases would you expect? What's interesting is, of all these jurisdictions, Union City's probably the most comparable to what we're looking at doing, because they have both mediation at 7% and just cause. What's interesting, too, is that they have the highest utilization rate, which would give us the most conservative estimate. But it also speaks to something we've heard from the public, which is that if you have just cause as well, you're probably gonna have higher utilization of mediation, because people don't fear retaliation in the same way they do otherwise. So I thought this was actually interesting from this data. So, two scenarios from this. One is if we were to have mediation applied to all rental units, the other to units with our properties with three or more units in the building. Our recommendation would net out government units or BMR restricted affordable units. So if we net those out of these total numbers, and then multiply by the district attorney's office rate, as well as the Union City ratio, we have a more scientific projection of potential costs tonight, ranging from about $25,000 to $40,000. So again, you be the judge, I don't know if this is the best equation for calculating this, but I think it's better than what we were doing before, and maybe it gives a better sense of cost. So with all that, there are essentially four takeaways from the subcommittee. Again, there are more takeaways from the staff report, I'm happy to go into, but really for the presentation. Number one, the subcommittee is recommending that we move forward with both policies, but have them applied to properties with three or more units. The second recommendation is that mediations would be triggered by rent increases of 10% or greater, and then the city would not maintain a data registry, because we are already essentially collecting most of that information. The final piece of this is, I just want to plug this again, is that there is not general fund budget available at the moment for these programs. There is the potential for the City Council to reprogram funding up to $65,000 from the homeless initiatives budget. As the point person on that fund, certainly, we could use that for homeless services, no doubt. There are plenty of programs that that could go towards. But in the spirit of, I think, homelessness prevention, which is a big strategy behind these initiatives, it seems like it could be a well-aligned use of the funds. This helped me, it might not help you, but I tried to take those three insights or themes from the beginning and show how they basically mutually reinforce these recommendations. So the fact that we're already collecting data, the fact that we have limited capacity, and the fact that I think we might be talking about a small number of landlords that are engaged in very significant rent increases, that led to the fact that maybe if we're gonna roll out both programs at first, we start in a more conservative way and then see how it goes. On that final note, there has been a question of whether or not you can do these as pilot programs. The county of Marin did do just cause as a pilot program for two years. And then the other thing that I'd like to highlight is that these are, of course, iterative in nature, so they can be changed. So when the county initially adopted mandatory mediation, they had some language in there, for example, around housing services. So it'd be a 5% rent increase, either in terms of the rent or housing services. So if I lost a parking place and the cost of getting a new parking place put my threshold above 5%, it would have triggered the mediation. So they've gone back and amended things like that. So there's no reason that we couldn't change that either. So that concludes my presentation. Before I turn it back to the council, we have been kind enough to be joined by Lili Thomas, again, from the county of Marin. And she was gonna get up and, just for a little bit, briefly describe, again, a little bit more context about the county programs and their process over the past couple of years. couple of years. So I'll turn it over to Leely.
Thanks, Andrew. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks, Andrew. Thanks, mayor and council members. Again, Leely Thomas with the Marin County Community Development Agency, here to give you a little bit of background on the county's process and our programs, and then later, I can answer any questions that you may have. As Andrew mentioned, the first time that he, in your first workshop, in 2015, the Board of Supervisors initiated a work plan intended to prevent displacement and to preserve housing affordability for renters in our community. And in December of 2018, so three years later, we adopted the last in a series of tenant protections, and that was the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance. These policies all went through extensive review by staff, by outside ex-legal counsel who had been working on a number of the jurisdictions that Andrew mentioned in his presentation, as well as by stakeholders, including landlords and tenants from our communities and the general public. There were 15 workshops and hearings in front of the Board of Supervisors, as well as extended number of community meetings, and the subcommittee met for about two years to consider these policies. So I'm giving you this background, just to make the point that the county spent a lot of time trying to make policies that were both fit with the county, but were also, could be replicated by our partners in the cities and towns. Because some of this work is really intended to address the county's and the city and town's obligation to affirmatively further fair housing that is required as part of our partnership through the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs that we all receive funds from. So part of that requirement is to address patterns of segregation and issues in our community. And one of the ways to do that is to address some renter protections, because members of the protected classes under fair housing and civil rights laws are overrepresented among the renters in our communities. So, among those tenant protections, also, the mandatory mediation was one of those programs. And that program has been used in the Bay Area, really addressing escalating rent increases in jurisdictions that seek to promote community accountability. And as your staff report mentions, such programs are designed to achieve these goals through the facilitation of constructive conversations in a neutral and accountable environment. And I think, just thinking about that phrase, and thinking about that's what the goal of the mediation program is. So it makes sense for the, for mediation ordinance in that context to be as broadly available to both tenants and landlords as possible. We've found that it really does promote that sense of learning and understanding for all the parties, and I think that I mentioned this before, but it, it really, we've had a lot of examples where both the landlord and the tenant learn from each other. They learn about what the costs of business are to act as a landlord, what the impact is on a tenant when there is rent increases. And so, really, we feel like it's been a way to kind of promote community accountability and a dialogue between tenants and landlords. And then, we have found that, at least anecdotally, that many landlords are not raising their rents beyond the 5% that has become this threshold. And that includes one property manager who manages hundreds of units throughout the county. And what she said is that, based on the fact that the county had the mandatory mediation, they just didn't want to raise beyond 5% in any of their jurisdictions, because they were really looking for consistency across the jurisdictions. I'd also like to point out that, according to the Marin Economic Forum's new CEO, that he's expecting that vacancies are going to continue to go down, and rents are going to go up, that that's going to be the trend that we're going to see. So it would behoove us all to just be prepared for that climate. And again, just thinking about consistency, one of the things that we heard frequently with our landlords was that they wanted to have, to be able to understand what the policies were across jurisdictions, and so, looking at consistency. And also, I just wanted to point out that the district attorney's consumer protection unit has been a really, has been a really good partner and an asset that we, as we've worked with them. And they have trained staff, bilingual staff, that have been really instrumental in making sure that the program is available to folks. And then, finally, I just wanted to clarify that the county's just cause ordinance is actually not a pilot. They did say that we are going to come back and report on it after two years, but there's no sunset date. So it's not technically a pilot, just to clarify for folks who may be watching. And then, I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up.
And there may be, and thank you so much for joining us. I'd just like to comment that not only did the five of us meet on occasion, five of us, including Scott Gerber, very knowledgeable from the apartment owner standpoint, David Levin from Marin Legal Aid, and also Dennis Redoni, the county supervisor that worked on this. So we got the input from those, those three individuals, but also Andrew and our city attorney, Rob Epstein. So, had good, good participation. Want to publicly, so I don't overlook it later, thank Andrew McCullough, who are really taking the lead on this and doing a yeoman's task to bring us to this point this evening. There may be some, some changes. One in particular comes to mind, as we proceed this evening. The process will be for council members to ask any questions they might have regarding the staff report, to, to their satisfaction, then open for public comment, and come back for further deliberation and action at that point. So that's, that's where we're going with this. So let's start with the first, and thanks again, Andrew, for the fine report that you, you've prepared, and certainly, all of the assistance that, that you offered during our, this process, and same with the city attorney, of course. So, having said that, questions? John? Mayor Beth? We'll start.
I'm going to start with the 10% question. What is the rationale for that number? Oh, sorry.
Let me, if I could, just comment on, the question was, excuse me, the question was, with regard to the 10%, the increase of a certain amount that would then trigger mediation. The question is, why 10%? And I'll let Councilmember McCullough talk about that for a moment, because our thinking may have changed since that was prepared, but you can discuss that.
Let me just, let me make a couple of comments, and then, happy to respond. And I'm going to speak for myself, because I can't purport to speak for the committee, although, together, we achieved consensus on a lot of issues. On some, we didn't, but nevertheless, we made recommendations that you see in the staff report. I thought Andrew's presentation was excellent. Andrew, thank you for that, and Leely's comments, thank you. You add additional clarity, and it's very much appreciated. My guess is, this evening, given the number of people who have shown up, there are going to be two of our open issues that are going to get the most attention. And so, I'd very much like to hear feedback on those two issues, and Councilmember Bushy identified one of them.
I'm sorry. Lindsey?
Can I also just have you slow down just slightly? Thank you.
And I will slow down. The two issues that I think we really need feedback on are the 5 versus 10%, although you've seen the staff report that the committee recommended 10%. That's not, nothing here is ironclad, but both 5% and 10% carry consequences. And we're not sure what all of those consequences will be. We haven't seen enough data from other jurisdictions that have adopted mandatory mediation in conjunction with just cause, to know whether, for example, 5% as a trigger would encourage landlords to automate 4.9% increases every year in order to maximize that threshold. It's less likely they would do it with a 10% threshold, but it's possible. Are there consequences of a, of a 10% threshold beyond that? We're not sure. Certainly, 5% sends a signal that's more sympathetic to the community. On the cost of mediation, the other big open issue that I expect people, and we would like to have addressed, we're not staffed in the same way the county is for a program like this. We don't have a Health and Human Resources Division and a budget allocation for it. Instead, we would be borrowing from other needs, including our homeless initiatives, which are also priorities. So how do we staff it? The renter board that Andrew referred to might be one very useful tool and might minimize our costs, but is it appropriate, for example, for landlords to bear the cost, for tenants to bear the cost, for both of them to split it? This is open for discussion. Having said that, I don't have any questions for Andrew, and I, I'm happy to answer or not answer questions from my council members, but I very much would like to get feedback from the community who are here this evening, particularly on those two open issues. Certainly, there are other open issues, and I'm happy to talk offline, but we want information this evening, because what will happen after this evening is, we will give direction to staff to come back at a future date with something that we can actually vote on. So, thank you, Mayor, for that opportunity.
And that's, that's a good point. Action won't be taken this evening, but rather, direction to staff to come back with an ordinance will be first, we'll, we'll react to that, and then, there'll be a second ordinance, followed in by two weeks, roughly. So that's, that's where we're at in terms of timeframe. So, we're not going to finalize, excuse me, this evening, but rather, give some direction, and then react to that direction when it comes back to us. Mayor Beth, did you have questions beyond that?
No questions beyond that. Very interested in hearing from the community.
Yeah, thank you. John?
Yeah, so, one of the questions that I have is, is it, it relates to the previous meeting that we, that we had, when, I believe, can't remember the gentleman who spoke, talked about the issue not necessarily being the cost of rent, but the lack of housing, and the lack of housing being built, and thus, the market forces that dictate that when you have less of a supply and more of a demand, the rates are going to go up. And what they, they've shown in Petaluma, where they've built more, is that rents have stabilized, and rents have actually started to come down in a natural, in a natural way. So the, one of the questions I have was, the amount of units that have been built in San Rafael over the last, let's just pick a number, five years. And of those units that have been built, or put on, put into the market as rental units, how many of those are affordable? How many of those for low, ultra-low, or moderate income? And how many of those are multifamily? Because we see is, is the most part in your, in your slide there, that the 3-plus units or the multifamily units are a larger percentage of where the folks are, are living, and they're not living in, necessarily, in single-family homes. So, I hope that you got all that.
I do. Yeah, thanks to Paul Jensen, our Community Development Director. So, over the last five years, San Rafael has created 225 new housing units. Four were at the very low income level, 47 were at the low, and then 11 were at moderate, and the rest were market. So 163 were at market. So, again, overall, 225 new units. I do agree with you more philosophically that that is the long-term fix to this issue, is more housing creation. So I think, one of the key things to balance here is, these policies, and I think Leely touched on this, you know, are really designed around preventing displacement and trying to protect current tenants. So how do you balance that priority with the fact that even as, you know, new state legislation's coming down, and new funding's coming down, it's going to take time for that, the housing crisis overall, in terms of supply, to bend back in a more affordable direction?
So as a follow-up on that, if, if we apply restrictions or ordinances, do we view that as an impact or a barrier for developers to want to build this housing? You know, if, if a developer comes and says, I'm going to, I'm going to go to a place where I can build without a restriction put in for rental units, or I can come to a place where there is ordinances, or is, is there going to be an impact on that? Or is that going to be, are we hearing from that group, I don't know if there was any developers in that, in that group, that said that that would be a detriment or a deterrent for folks to come and build in San Rafael? Because if the ultimate goal is to provide more housing units, and we have ordinances, policies on, on the books, that might deter those from building that, then we're still in the same situation three, four, five, six years down the road. And you, you mentioned the five, the five-year number. What's, what's, what's the number in, let's just say, the last two years of, of units that have come on board?
The last, the last two years have been 41 units and 27 units. More generally, though, I did prepare some slides, because I thought you might ask this. So first, just briefly, this isn't quite touching on your question, but just the immediate impact of these programs, especially the mediation programs. So, I showed you the slide before at the last meeting. This is the data from the first year of the county's program. What we find here is actually pretty common across all the programs that I've seen, where of the cases that come in, about, of the ones that are eligible, about a half to two-thirds actually moved forward with some type of agreement. Union City, they had, each community is reporting in a slightly different way, but, again, you can see that they had about 10 requests between May of 2017, December of 2018. The average rent increase before the review was 16%, and then it came down to 13%. So for the ones that, there's, they're reaching agreement, there is a marginal improvement in rent. Same in Fremont, you can see that the rent increase before the rent review was 11.5, and then it decreased to 8.7. And then I think the most telling one, part of the challenge is that a lot of these programs are so new, it's hard to know, like, what is the long-term impact of the data. But, in Alameda, and admittedly, their program's a bit more restrictive than what we're proposing, but you can see, it's a little bit grayed out, but in fiscal year 2016, 2017, they had 561 rent increase submissions. The following year, there was a 70% reduction in the number of rent increases above 5%. So, to me, that suggests that, over time, these programs can really, going back to the, the issue that Councilmember McCullough brought up around anchoring, where do landlords feel comfortable, you know, this, this really speaks to that. You, your point, though, is certainly, what's the long-term impact of this? And so, you know, in talking to property owners, and talking to current landlords and other folks in the community, there are real concerns about the long-term impact. So could this constrain, constrain the creation of new housing? Could it result in existing units going off the market? Could it reduce investment in the rental housing overall? And could this actually speed up displacement? What's important to note is that a lot of the studies that have been done, have been done, so there's the famous Cambridge study, there was a recent study from Stanford about rent control in San Francisco, is that most of the studies that have been done have really looked at rent-controlled communities in the sense of price control. And I think what's important, and I don't have the answer, I think there's interpretation from all the stakeholders, but rent control, rental restrictions, rental regulation, are they actually synonyms? They're used as if any sort of restriction is going to lead to the same outcome as rent control, but I don't know if that's actually true. It seems like that's a step too far. Of some of the studies that have been done on the previous studies, they have noted that while there might be a decrease in overall supply in the long run, there is increased pressure, or not increased pressure, there is decreased pressure on displacement. So it does help people stay in the community longer. And then the final note, and again, I don't have a study that I can show you right now, but the feedback that I think I've heard, and I don't know if Paul even wants to speak to this, but a lot of the issue with new development is really the cost of construction, the uncertainty with zoning, the uncertainty with discretionary review. So it seems like those are more immediate pressing concerns for developers than what the rental market's going to look like down the road. The final thing I did want to add, because I mentioned it earlier, is, do these policies actually accelerate displacement? So this was an interesting discussion point that was brought up with some of the conversations I had. The thinking was that, basically, if there's just cause, then I, as a landlord, landlord, am going to be more choosy about who I pick to actually rent my unit. And I thought about that, that makes certainly a lot of sense. But in talking to others, I was reminded that the real core issue here is the vacancy rate, and the vacancy rate signals how competitive the market is. So, we're already in an environment where landlords have their choice of renters, and that's precisely why the county Marin Housing Authority have had to create landlord recruitment programs, because they were already having a hard time placing people that had difficult backgrounds. So, it's not clear that that's actually true. But again, it's not certain.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have some more questions, but I can wait. I'll have some more questions, but I can wait.
Sure. Kate?
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Andrew, for your presentation, and Leely for coming here and sharing about the county. I know we're talking about the ins and outs, and I look forward to hearing from the community as well about what they feel is right about the recommendation. Personally, I felt like the county one is right on, and so, I'll be hearing whether that is something you agree with or don't agree with as you come up. For me, and maybe this is for the subcommittee, I'm not sure why people's race wasn't considered as part of the report. So, last year, or you might be able to answer this, so last year, the Race Counts reports came out, which was put together by the Advancement Project. And in that, and I should have sent you the data so you could put it up there, but there was interesting information having to do with just renters. And so, when you look at people's income after they pay for their rent, for whites, they have $52,000. And this is, I'm quoting from this report, "For the Latinx community, they have just over $16,000." So, I'm confused why that part in that issue wasn't talked about as part of the recommendation. Because to me, that seems like integral to the discussion, as well as the many emails we got.
I would say, maybe just, while race is certainly a key factor in this, and what are the economic circumstances of folks that rent in San Rafael, it certainly is the case that, just overall, renters, on average, earn less, have less income, as you mentioned, than homeowners. And I think what we've found, just from an economic point of view, is, again, why are we pursuing these policies in the first place? A huge percentage of renters in San Rafael and Marin County are overburdened in terms of paying for housing. So, that's if you're paying more than 30% of your income towards housing. So, while I don't have the racial information, what I can say is, at least from an economic point of view, socioeconomic point of view, people that are renting in our communities are very cost-burdened.
Right. And I think one of the comments, you'd said that it's, what was it, two times? You had a, talked about people spend, or something about two times. What was it? You gave me a great quote earlier, I'll have to find it. But anyway, the point being is that there is a difference between people that own and the people that rent in terms of what they pay for housing. Tonight, we're talking about renters. And in addition, there's another factor there, which is the issue of race and inequality. So, to me, I just felt like we were missing a part of the conversation, which is, might be an uncomfortable part, but it is a real part, especially given, again, the community that's come out tonight and the emails we've had. So, we'll wait to hear from them, but that was one part I wish we had addressed a little bit more directly.
Before the community, and I'm anxious, like the others, to hear from you, but I want to talk about, just briefly, two factors. One, the 5% versus 10%. And I'll say rent control, whether or not it is synonymous. First, let me touch on the 5%-10%. Because my thinking has evolved, if you will, since the recommendation was made, and just to let you know where I'm at before a comment, so therefore, I may change my view, but at this point in time, I'm more in favor of 5% than 10%. But let me just touch on both of those and some of the consequences, so you can consider those as you deliberate and present your views to us. 5% certainly seems to be conventional. If you look at the board, most communities that have gone down this path have said 5% is a reasonable point at which time, if it exceeds, the proposed rent exceeds the 5%, then there should be mediation to discuss this. That makes some sense. One of the consequences, however, is, and there's no data on this, so it's just us thinking about it as a community, one of the consequences is, and we've seen this, or the county, I believe, has seen, that many times, the landlord or the owner will say, "Okay, what's my pattern? I can raise to almost 5%, let's say 4.9% as an example, without having to go through the next step, that is mediation, mandatory mediation." So, I can see an incentive for landlords, particularly with a vacancy factor of almost zero, 3% is almost zero, and there's a lot of demand out there. So, I can see the landlords going, "Hmm, why don't I raise it 4.9% this year, next year, the following year, and each year thereafter? Because, you know, I don't have to go through this next exercise." So, there's an incentive to raise to that level. Hmm. Maybe that's good, maybe it's not good. What if the average is 3%? Well, they might still go 4.9% because they may not be able to recover in the following year if rents go up 10%. So, let's just average it out, they may, thinking maybe, let's average it out. Raise it 4.9%, won't have any problems, and therefore, we're building into this system something that we haven't experienced recently, which is a higher rate of rent increase than more recently, it hasn't been that much. Now, if we go 10%, hmm, what's that all about? There may not be the same inclination, because you're seeing evidence recently that landlords, there are a few exceptions, and we'll talk about that in a moment, but landlords, for the most part, are not raising 10%. Furthermore, if they know that they can recover in the second year, let's say, if rents increase substantially, and they're so inclined, perhaps they've made some improvements, et cetera. So, if they raise it 3% in the first year, and now their costs have gone up substantially, they know that next year, the following year, I can raise it 7, 8, 9% to recover that. Well, let's say the next year comes, and it goes, and they stay at 3%, et cetera. There's not the same incentive. And I don't know how to quantify the results or the likelihood of tenants going through this exercise, but I can see as a possibility. Frankly, that's why originally, initially, we thought, "Okay, let's make it 10," so we're not building in an incentive to raise, I'll say, 5%, slightly less than 5, each year. So, there's that balance. So, take it in consideration. It's not, we're endorsing 10% with a recommendation. Like I said, right now, I'm leaning to 5, but recognize why that was done. It's perhaps not as simple as it might first appear. Second thing, to John's point, I don't equate mandatory mediation to rent control. I know a little bit about rental properties as CPA, and I've dealt with this with clients, et cetera. There is a decided difference, in my opinion, with regard to the difference between rent control, wherein it's dictated to you what the rent will be by some governmental agency, perhaps the city, perhaps the county, versus mandatory mediation. Mandatory mediation, David Levin knows far better than I because he experienced it, but I was involved a little bit in the process here in San Rafael, where rents went up, or were proposed by two different landlords, having acquired property, and then coming and saying, "By the way, 38 tenants, you have eight days," well, maybe not eight days, "you have 30 days," I guess it was, that doesn't really matter, "but you have a limited amount of time, because we're going to raise rents 60 to 70%." And you can imagine the response from the tenants, and that's where I got a little bit involved. So, what's that all about? Well, what that's all about is, David and the attorney for the new owner met, and I got a little bit involved, but not much, to be honest with you, they met, and they worked out an agreement without a mandatory mediation plan in place that they had to follow, nevertheless, an agreement that was acceptable to both parties. Now, that's considerably different than rent control, and it's quite a lot like what we're suggesting with mediation. It's an opportunity for the two parties to get together, discuss the matter, to come to some conclusion. It's not required, but nevertheless, there is an opportunity, and it worked twice in San Rafael when there were significant increases. So, that process, I think, has merit. It's not going to create, as John would point out, and he's absolutely right, it's not going to create necessarily in and of itself more units. That really is what we should be leaning towards, but in the short term, we need to address this issue, in my view. So, with that, unless there are other comments.
Maybe we could have parents who have younger kids or students come up first, because they've been waiting very patiently, if possible.
I'm sort of not into dictating who talks first, but that's not a bad suggestion. So, at this point in time, open to the public, and if you could, keep your comments to two minutes, it'll be timed. And also, if you could, we recognize a number of you have matters you'd like to discuss with us, but if you start repeating, in the interest of time for everyone, let's try to avoid that, and we'll take careful note of your comments.
So, if you would introduce yourselves. George Pegalow, resident of Marin County since 1987, formerly on the faculty of Stanford University for approximately 25 years, involved with the group called Next Gen Marin, co-founder. And I must say that Mr. Gamble had hit it on the head, it is a problem with the number of units available, not only in San Rafael, but in the county. Zoning needs to be addressed. Regulations that add upwards of 30-plus percent to costs of building, city regulations, county regulations, need to be looked at closely. And also, I think you should look beyond the Bay Area at places like Seattle and New York City, where they have done significant things to address increasing rents. So, there are lots of examples beyond the Bay Area that would guide you in making a decision as to how you should proceed to deal with this issue, which is basically, there is not enough housing in the county of Marin. That's very clear. I think that there is some data about the impact of rent control rules that does impede development, and that can be balanced with reducing the cost of dealing with bureaucracy. So, there are ways of making adjustments in the system that would serve the increase in the number of housing units in the city and the county. So, I urge you to look carefully at what's been done elsewhere and listen carefully to citizens who, I think, have thought a great deal about creative ways to deal with this challenge. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. And I'll ask that comments with regard to mandatory mediation, not in my view, anyway, be conflicted with rent control. I think they're decidedly different concepts, without different outcomes.
I'm Julia Kiley. I'm here with Cole Shafar, which is a member of the Marin Organizing Committee. I'm also a renter in San Rafael. If you're here with MOC or are supportive of a 5% threshold for mandatory mediation, please stand, if you're able. MOC commends San Rafael for considering just cause and mandatory mediation, but we are concerned about the changes proposed to these ordinances that MOC worked hard with the county and the town of Fairfax to research, publicly vet, and pass. First, the just cause as proposed would only cover 68% of rental units in San Rafael, but all renters reserve protection. Just cause is the foundation for effective renter protections. Just cause protects people when they try to exercise their rights, not only for mandatory mediation, but also when reporting health code violations or organizing tenants. Leaving out 32% of San Rafael rental households means those families are still vulnerable to eviction, and therefore, justifiably afraid to file legitimate complaints. Fairfax included all non-owner occupied units. How can San Rafael reasonably leave 32% of renter households unprotected? We're also concerned that rent would need to increase 10% before renters could request a mandatory mediation. I pay $2,500 for a one-bedroom apartment. A 10% increase in that would, if I went by what landlords require your income to be to qualify for a rent, would mean that I would have to have $10,000 more in income that year. That's not likely to happen. I would need to move for the third time in four years and be, I'm a grown professional woman, and I would have to get a roommate. 48% of San Rafael residents are renters. There are risks to any decision, but for the real people suffering unconstrained rent increases, for the 32% of renters excluded from eviction protection, these ordinances as proposed would be hollow promises. Act on the data you have, it's standing right in front of you.
Thank you. Next?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? If I could just chime in for just a moment, is there any possibility we'd be able to have a short recess for our interpreter to take a second to stop talking?
Yes, we shall. Thank you. Thank you for asking, and we'll take a short recess. Thank you. Don't go away. Thanks for asking. Thank you very much. And welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Shannon Griffin. I'm a homeowner here in San Rafael. I recently paid our property taxes, and I imagine most of you have done, and I usually wait to the last minute because it's not easy writing that check. The ugly reality of those property taxes is that they nearly always go up. The beauty of property taxes in California is they don't go up more than 2%. It's the law. No increase more than 2%. But for renters in San Rafael, they can receive unlimited increases every year. Imagine a 10% increase in your property taxes every year. To say, I'm sorry to say that a burdensome increases are just from a small number of outliers, it's misleading. I'm sitting to two, next to two people I've never met before, they're in their 80s, they received 10% increase last year, receiving another 10% increase this year. This is the norm. It's not in headlines, but it's the norm. You can pass a law to help protect renters from excessive increases, like property owners have protection from egregious property taxes. Our state legislators are considering a bill that would cap rent increases at 5% plus inflation, about 7.5% because of the housing crisis in this state. They're calling AB 1482 an anti-gouging bill. Why would San Rafael seek to normalize rent increases of 10% when it's considered by many as gouging? On top of it, the law being considered here would only trigger mediation with a 10% increase, no increase, no guarantee against rent gouging. The city of San Rafael, as we heard, has passed the 5% increase mandatory mediation and just cause ordinance aligning with the county. In Fairfax, it's 34% of residences are renters. Here, San Rafael, it's 48% of renters. Can this city not help protect our renters to the same degree as Fairfax or the county? I think you can. Please, listen to the majority of people who elected you, not to the few who seek profit first, but put community and decency second. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Ruth Jaeger. This is my husband, Steve Wolfe. We are longtime residents of Marin. I own a business in San Rafael, and we are landlords. While our property is not located here in Marin, we share the concerns of any small landlord. We want a reasonable return on our investment, enough money in reserve to afford repairs, and to maintain the value of our property. Some have argued that a 5% threshold for mandatory mediation will cause landlords like us to raise the rent to 4.9%, and the just cause will make us discriminate. us to raise the rent to 4.9%, and the just cause will make us discriminate about who we rent to. But where's the data? Where are these landlords? This is an imaginary threat. There are two kinds of landlords. Landlords who see tenants as human beings and landlords who only treat tenants as a number on a balance sheet. The only landlords afraid of 5% are those who don't want to look their tenants in the eye. These ordinances won't change our behavior. They don't prevent us from evicting problem tenants, and they don't prevent us from raising the rent. If there was an emergency of some kind and we needed to raise the rent, we'd gladly explain it to our tenants and hear how it impacts them and see if there's a way to mitigate that impact. And we could still raise the rent above 5%. Fairfax thinks 5% is fair, and so does the county. Both intend to use the county DA's office for mediation, and both passed their ordinances with the input of landlords. Mandatory mediation at 5% and just cause evictions are not onerous requirements for landlords. We urge the city council to adopt the same regulations as did the county and Fairfax. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Carolyn Coles, and I have rented one of five units from the same landlord for about the last 20 years. And I've not only maintained it, but I've improved it, paid the rent on time, neat and clean, considered an ideal tenant. This landlord has seen fit to raise my rent, sometimes $300 in one year, consistently in the last five to 10 years, $100 every month, I'm sorry, every year. And this is just in spite of the fact that I've got habitability issues that they're aware of. This is with no maintenance whatsoever. The place is falling apart, cracks in the walls in the linoleum, water intrusion. And one of the other units, the exact same unit, pays the same rent with a completely remodeled unit. So there's no consideration whatsoever. I'm just a dollar figure to them. And I think it's outrageous, and I think this county needs rent control more than any county in Noah. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joan Dubkowski, and I've been living in Marin since 1988. And I think the big question for me is, what's the matter with 10%? And I'm going to give you a quick little description of my neighborhood. In my neighborhood, 45% of the residents are on a fixed retirement income. We are your elders, and 61% of my neighbors are already paying more than 30% of their income on rent. Our current five-year lease is a 10% increase every year. It's important that you really live with that number, I think. It's not once, and then we had a 10% increase, and we pay that for five years. It's every year. And triggering mandatory mediation means nothing because it has no teeth. It isn't rent control. I completely agree. So what does 10% really look like for people who are renting, and this is the truth, on the ground in Marin? It means that within three years, I think many of my neighbors will be homeless. Homeless. We are your elders, your young families, your tradesmen, and 62% rent increase over five years is unconscionable. I hope you can do something for us. Thank you.
And thank you. David, good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you. I'm David Levin, managing attorney at Legal Aid at Marin, also a member of the subcommittee, and want to thank the council and staff for work on this important issue that means so much to our clients. Probably not a surprise, there was a range of opinions on the subcommittee. I'm glad to hear you're still looking at these questions, and I want to highlight two of them, because at Legal Aid at Marin, every day we see people facing the housing crisis and the consequences of housing insecurity, including loss of jobs, educational opportunities, medical consequences, and even homelessness. So it's an incredibly important issue. Want to look first at the 10% number. I have a letter I'm going to leave that has a little chart showing the magic of compound interest means that 10% every year is actually more than twice as much as a 5% increase. Besides the math, I also talked to the county Department of Housing on Friday, who told me that of the 22 mediation cases they've had in the last year and a half, only two were above 10% rent increases. So that means if their cutoff had been at 10%, they would have had just about 10% of the cases they saw are cutting out 90%, really. So that's one of the consequences. And so would like you to take another look at going to the 5% level instead. The second issue, I'd like to ask you to take another look at the three-unit requirement because part of the logic, I understand, is to connect it to the just cause ordinance, but really, it's a different law, and it's going to make things more complicated. Legal Aid at Marin, we have a grid now for all the different rental protections across the county. It's very complicated when we have to advise people, look, you're two blocks outside of San Rafael, and even though you live in a duplex, where you wouldn't be covered in San Rafael, the law's going to be different, you know, for the county, for duplexes. So please take another look at the three-unit requirement. Last thing I'd like to mention, because the mayor talked about the two high-profile cases we had last year where we did get good results and we saw the benefits of mediation, but that happened because our office invested over 200 hours in each of those cases, and we're not able to do that in every situation, was because, you know, those cases involved dozens of renters. And so really, we saw the benefits of mandatory mediation that everybody should share. But the last comment, in a moment of candor, one of the attorneys told me that he was seeing more interest in San Rafael because there weren't renter protections here, you know, and that made it more attractive for investment groups who might otherwise look at Oakland or San Francisco. So I know there was a question about the consequences, potential consequences of renter protection, but please think about the consequences of not having renter protection. Thank you.
And thanks again, David, for all your work on this.
Mi nombre es Juana Rosales.
Thank you for helping us with this.
Mi nombre es Juana Rosales.
Good evening. My name is Juana Rosales.
Vivo en el área de Canal.
I live in the Canal area.
Soy mamá de tres hijos y en el caso mío...
I am the mother of three children, and in my case...
Durante el tiempo que estoy viviendo ahí, me están subiendo y subiendo la renta y...
During the time that I've been living there, they are increasing and increasing the rent.
Y pues igual no me arreglan este el apartamento cuando necesito algo.
And they still don't even fix the apartment when I need something.
Y por el aumento de renta cada año, es cada, me hacen firmar contrato en la que, en la cual tengo que pagar más.
And in their rent increase every year, they make me sign a contract in which I have to pay more.
Y pues en el caso mío como mamá me tuve que buscar otro trabajo.
And in my case, as a mother, I had to find another job.
Ah, para pagar más, más renta.
So I could pay more rent.
Y pues yo, yo este estoy aquí para que pare, pare la renta, para que no siga subiendo.
And so I'm here to please, you know, stop the rent increases so it doesn't continue to go up.
Como mamá no me gusta dejar a mis hijos mucho tiempo ni descuidarlos y por eso estoy aquí.
And as a mother, I don't like having to leave my children alone for so long and to not care for them, so that's why I'm here.
Y pues eso es todo, muchas gracias.
So, well, that's all. Thank you very much.
And thanks to the two of you.
Mi nombre es Yolanda Barahona.
Good evening. My name is Yolanda Barahona.
Y yo también quiero pedirles que por favor pongan este control de rentas.
And I also would like to ask you to please come up with this rent control.
Porque en mi caso, yo soy mamá soltera.
Because in my case, I am a single mother.
Mi hija comenzó el kindergarten en Lauderdale y ahora está en el décimo grado de la high school.
My daughter started in kindergarten in Lauderdale and now is in 10th grade in high school.
Y he tenido que llamar a mi hijo para que venga a vivir conmigo, con mi nieto.
And I had to call my son to come and live with me, along with my grandchild.
Porque yo en mi trabajo gano 15 dólares la hora.
Because me, at my job, I earn 15 dollars an hour.
No puedo pagar. Tengo, tengo la suerte de solo pagar 1,800 dólares.
I cannot pay. I am lucky enough to have to only pay 1,800.
Pero el año pasado mi vecino que es el mismo, la mismo, el mismo apartamento de dos cuartos...
But last year, my neighbor who lives in an apartment that is also a two-room apartment...
Se mudó y a los nuevos vecinos les subieron tres, pagan 3,000 dólares por mes.
He moved, and the new neighbors are now paying 3,000 dollars a month.
Entonces yo la verdad que cada día pido que a mí no me van a subir tanto porque entonces me tengo que ir de aquí.
So every day I ask that my raise, that my rent doesn't get raised so much because I just want to know what to do.
Y yo no me quiero ir porque mi hija está en la high school y ya casi sale, cómo la muevo.
And I don't want to leave because my daughter is in high school, and you know, what would I do? How would I take her out of there?
Solo les cuento esto para que sepan cómo estamos viviendo y puedan decidir, tener una buena decisión.
I'm just letting you know this so you know what we're going through and so you can have a good decision.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. I just want to voice myself as a person, as a resident in the Canal area. I just wanted to say, from my point of view, that every year I've been, my rent has been raising. Many years, way back, it was really cheap, but from last year and the years before, I was rent from, I was raised from 200 to 250. Last September, I had to sign a lease that I was going to be charged 1,550. And if the rent increases as every year, imagine if you put yourself into my shoe, I eventually will have to move out or will have more people living that I don't know of, like, for example, roommates that I don't know, sharing or living with me in the same roof. So if you guys come into my position as a person, as you know, most of the people living in the Canal area are mostly people that are minimum wage, and if this goes up, eventually what will happen for us? So I just wanted you guys to put yourself into our shoe and think about it wisely because we'd rather not have a 10% increase, which if I'm already at 2,550, how much will that be? 255 more on top of all the bills? Plus, they were already sending me a letter sending that they will be charging us amendment, something about amendments, like we have to pay trash, sewage, and even the, what was the other one? There were three things that they have already sent us later that will include our, apart from what we are already paying, apart from the rent, too. So I don't think, it's something that, it's something that you guys should know about, which I don't have the letter. If I had it, then I should have showed you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your...
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thanks to staff for your great analysis on this, and I look forward. I have a letter I want to read to you. The Aging Action Initiative, oh, my name is Linda Jackson. I'm with the Aging Action Initiative, which is a collaborative network of over 200 agencies, nonprofits, community-based organizations, and healthcare sector providers. And we support each other in our work to meet the needs of over 71,000 older people in Marin County. So having a place to live is one of our priorities. In 2017, in the American Community surveys, found that 10,000 people are over the age of 65 in San Rafael. And the median age of them is 74. 30% of them are renters. Now, of these folks who are over 65 and renting, 60% of them are paying more than 30% of their household income. Now, the income, you know, is social security. It does not go up, but a small percentage every year. This percentage overpaying for the rent has gone up significantly in the last four years of over 14%. More people over 65 are overburdened for the rent. So the proposed changes to the protections already adopted by the county, Nevada, and Fairfax are actually going to render these renter protections hollow for the thousands of older people in San Rafael growing, aging into homelessness. The city's website, I looked it up today for residents, says, "Your city loves you." So show that love by supporting meaningful protections for renters and by adopting the county's ordinances with no changes. They can always be revised later if they don't work, but we have to do something today for our renters. Thank you.
Linda, Linda. I want to understand, I have a copy of the letter.
Yes.
And the one paragraph you made reference to, I don't understand. The proposed changes to the protections already adopted by the county, Nevada, and Fairfax. So they've adopted something very similar to that that we're discussing this evening.
That's correct.
It goes on to say, "We'll render San Rafael." I don't understand the connection between county, Fairfax, and Nevada rendering our protections as hollow. What's the connection between?
Well, the changes that are proposed, the 10% increase as opposed to 5%, which the others have, the elimination of the reasons that are given for just cause, there's a number of proposals, and when you look at them, they all weaken the protections that have been adopted by the other jurisdictions. David Levin spoke to this with Legal Aid, and there's a great change in variation of ordinances. It makes it harder to enforce. And are the need for renters, I mean, we've got older people that are having to move out of the county where they've lived their whole lives, third and fourth generation, people who've grown, you know, in Marin County, can no longer live here because of rents are going up so high. So the counselors and social agencies are having to explain to people, their option is they have to leave Marin. They cannot stay here. They cannot afford it. So I would just suggest to stay with what has been adopted by the other jurisdictions. You can always, if it's not working, monitor it, make adjustments later, but look at what they've done and adopt those. That's my recommendation from Aging Action Initiative. Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough would like to...
I just want to make one comment. Linda Jackson's, Linda Jackson's comments were very help, no, I'm just, don't need Linda back. Her comments were very apropos, certainly, but in keeping with some of the comments that preceded hers, I'd like to clear the air here. When you're recommending that we do, for example, as Fairfax did, and adopt the county's ordinance as is, that's not accurate. Fairfax made fairly significant changes to the county's ordinance before it passed its own. So if you want to talk about Fairfax's, let's get into the details, but let's not paint ourselves with the same brush, that is, the county brush, recognizing that every jurisdiction has its unique needs and concerns.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Casey Epp. I'm the supervising attorney from Fair Housing Advocates of Northern California, and I'm also a board member of, I'm sorry, Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. And I also grew up here in San Rafael, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. My agency wholeheartedly supports both a mandatory mediation and just cause for eviction ordinance. as part of an integrated approach that supports other policies already in place, such as the source of income ordinance. However, the language must mirror that of the counties to ensure fairness and consistency. We believe that a joint ordinance is a crucial step in preserving affordable housing for the most vulnerable populations in the county who are protected under federal and state fair housing laws. And when there's, I see this every day, when there's a lack of rental protections, it's members of protected classes who suffer and who are targeted disproportionately. And it just contributes to our segregated housing patterns. Adding rental protections that will provide some stability and security for responsible tenants and help address displacement, such as just cause, and then providing an opportunity for tenants and owners to discuss increases, like mandatory mediation would, are critical ways for the county and for the city of San Rafael to meet its requirements and to affirmatively further fair housing. I'm just going to speak briefly about some of our clients who we talk to on a daily basis. We see they often feel, especially when they're the only family or the only African-American resident or Latinx resident who's asked to move or who's issued an excessive rent increase, that it's for the wrong reason. That it's because of their membership in a protected class. And I can tell you from our complaint-based and systemic investigations, we've seen examples of discriminatory practices here in San Rafael. And we've brought complaints, we're able to change policies, get compensation for the clients, but it doesn't change the fact that they're asked to move, that they leave. I don't want to go over my time too much, but just very, very briefly, I just wanted to say that some of the main concerns I had with the ordinance, particularly with the mandatory mediation, is, have already been addressed related to 5% and the units that it would apply to. So I'm not going to talk about those, but I would ask that you think about the repercussions of removing appeal options, requiring that tenants bring an action in court rather than having an appeal process. I think that can really discourage things. I mean, even as a lawyer, I think I would be deterred. I also think that having no written agreement in the event that there is no agreement reached, that will, I think that the consequences we're concerned about, that that would do more harm than good. I think that landlords would be more likely to engage in problematic behaviors if they know there's no, no writing, if they don't reach an agreement, rather than if there is. I don't think it would discourage open conversation. So I'm sorry for going over my time. I do appreciate...
No, thanks for your, thanks for your input. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Judy Vinsaka, representing the League of Women Voters of Marin County. The League was pleased that San Rafael's informational subcommittee used the county's adopted renter protection ordinances as a starting point for creating its own ordinances. But reading the conclusions in the report reached by that subcommittee raised League concerns that unlike the county organization, landlords, not renters, are being more protected in San Rafael. The most glaring difference is that San Rafael would require a 10% rent increase to begin the mandatory mediation process, while the county requires only a 5% increase. Also, the county requires that the process applies to all rental units except government-related units, while San Rafael would require that it applies only to properties with three units or more. Now that the county and Fairfax have adopted the 5% increase, why wouldn't San Rafael do the same? We believe all jurisdictions should adopt uniform measures to protect renters and avoid discontent among themselves. As the report makes clear, the housing crisis is acute for renters. Changes to the county's just cause eviction ordinance, represented, proposed by the subcommittee, however, again favors landlords and weakens renter protection. An example is the narrower availability of tenant remedies for San Rafael tenants. We strongly recommend that San Rafael's renter protection ordinances be designed to actually protect renters, not landlords. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Dr. Lisa Levitt, and I'm a pediatrician at Marin Community Clinics for the past 23 years. I'm also a Marin First Five Commissioner, and I'm on the board of Marin Kids. I can't really say that I'm happy to be here tonight speaking to you. The reason I'm here tonight is actually quite sobering. I'm here to try to help all of us understand that economic hardship and health and well-being are interconnected and can't be looked at separately. After practicing pediatrics for over two decades, I thought I had seen the full spectrum of disease and suffering, that not much could surprise me anymore. I was wrong. Several weeks ago, a nine-year-old child, a third grader, presented with self-harm injury. And I'm sure you are aware of the teen suicides at our local high school this past year. The children of Marin County and San Rafael in particular are crying out for relief from their anxiety and despair. And as a leader in this community, you have an opportunity to make a difference in promoting stability. We hear in the news about children and their parents being separated at the border. But what about separation here in San Rafael between children and parents who live under the same roof? Because of the already unaffordable rents in San Rafael, parents are working both day and night, two and three jobs, seven days a week. Children feel this acutely. Even though they technically live together, children do not have the time they so desperately need with their parents. For these parents who are barely getting by the difference between a 5% and 10% increase in rent will have serious consequences. Already difficult choices will become impossible choices. How can a patient continue paying for his hypertension and diabetes medications when the rent is due and there is scarcely enough food to last for the children until the next paycheck? These two small measures under consideration tonight are not the solution, but they will provide a tiny amount of housing and economic stability to the children I take care of in Marin, at Marin Community Clinic and their hard-working parents. Thank you.
And thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Cristina.
Good evening, my name is Cristina.
La verdad, yo vengo también con el, para que pueden bajar la renta porque también yo y mi esposo tenemos doble trabajo.
I come here so we can do something about lowering the rents because my husband and I, we have two jobs.
Y tengo tres niños y a veces pues tengo que turnarme con él para, para, para que lo podamos cuidar.
And I have three children, and sometimes we have to take turns in order to take care of them.
Y la verdad, cada año nos suben la renta pero no, no lo arreglan.
And the rent keeps increasing every year, but there's no, no end to it.
Y ese es el problema de cada año y todos los días que tienen problema que ser, se descomponen las cosas y no lo arreglan.
And that's a problem of every year and also every day, you know, when things break, I mean, they don't fix them. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, thanks for coming this evening.
Gracias.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Some of you know me. I am Howard Schwartz. I'm a resident of San Rafael. I'm also the director of System Change at St. Vincent's DePaul Society and have worked for the last three years to implement our Housing First program and coordinated entry. And I'm proud of our progress in housing over 125 of the most chronically homeless individuals. I know the city has been supportive of our efforts and a partner with us in this progress. And I also want to thank the city for a number of initiatives around housing. I heard Paul Jensen speak recently at the Housing Crisis Action Group, and I'm pleased by the initiatives the city has underway to increase housing opportunities. And I wanted to thank the city for considering the mandatory mediation and just cause proposals. As someone who's worked, been working with the homeless population, I've met a number of seniors and families who have lost their housing because they can no longer pay rent. Just recently, we had several vets, veterans in San Rafael whose rent went up more than they could afford because of a new owner of their building. As the report notes, we've seen similar situations in the Canal. So as we work to improve the quality of the city's streets, which I know we all care about, by housing those who are homeless, we want to do all we can to prevent people from falling into homelessness. It costs more to house a person than to prevent a person from becoming homeless. I think both of these proposals are important and would encourage, I think it sounds unanimous here, the city to lean as far as possible to the county standard. The more we encourage landlords to come to the table and understand the plights of their tenants, the more opportunity we have to prevent more displacement or at least slow it down so that we have time to find other solutions for people who are facing crises. I'm in favor of a wider net, the 5% or greater. When I actually sat down and calculated the 10% annually, I was really blown away that it comes out to 62% over five years. So in conclusion, I encourage you to lean as far as you can towards the county to have consistency and to protect our renters. Thank you.
Howard, thanks for everything you've done.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alex Califfen, I'm with the California Apartment Association. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I was speaking too fast, so I just realized that. So we have submitted a letter of opposition to just cause eviction back in February, so I will not go over that again, as I'm sure you've seen it by now. And we certainly don't disagree there's a housing crisis and people are struggling and should be helped. I think where we differ is how we help them. The issue as we see it, as some of the policies that you're currently considering may in fact make the situation worse. At the end of the day, there is a fine balance that needs to be kept between incentives for developers and builders and tenant protections. And it's sort of hard to balance that, and you asked a very difficult question and asked for a solution. Developers do need to invest in communities and see some return. That's just how it works. That's the reality. And I also understand that from your perspective, you have constituents to serve, so I get that. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments to some of the things I heard. The notion that there will not be screening of possible tenants, I don't, I disagree with that. That will happen. I think folks will sort of look at situations from a different lens, understanding that the environment has changed. The other issue that I will mention really quickly, as I know I'm probably running out of time, is that we have seen the market improve a little bit, so I think we're going in the right direction. The vacancy rates have stabilized, and I do think the rents have stabilized as well, and we have some data on that. The other thing I wanted to say is that we, we're committed to working with you and your staff, who I've met with, to figure a way forward with a solution that will work for everyone. So thank you for your time, and I know this is a really hard topic for you to deal with.
Can I ask your opinion before you leave?
Sure.
It relates to the 5%, 10%. I think our, collectively, our objective is the same. That is, to modulate, maybe, prevents almost too strong a word, but let's say to not witness substantial increases to, of rent to those in our community. The thing I'm wrestling with is what is going to be more effective? I know that 10% sounds like we're creating a ceiling of 10%. And yet, I'm wrestling with that because I'm not sure that that's the case for the reasons cited earlier with the buffer. So I, I, when I first thought about what was proposed to us, the 10%, I actually thought that that would result over a period of time, let's say, let's say five years. It's an arbitrary period. A period of time, rents would actually go up less if the 10% was put in place than 5%. That's counterintuitive perhaps, 5 is, 10 is more than 5. But the mechanism that's in place would encourage, I think in many cases, approaching the 5%. And so over a five-year period, in your view, none of us probably know for sure, I certainly don't, but in your view, over a five-year period, would the 10% result in more or less of an increase during that period of time?
What I can tell you is what I see for most of our members who are actually on the two to four units. The majority of our membership are in that number, is they don't go up that high as it is. What I have been hearing, because this is certainly not the only community that is talking about this, what I've been hearing is the idea of, well, maybe I maximize up to 5 because I don't know what next year is going to look like. My property is aging. I may need a significant investment. They may not go up to 4.9, let's say, under normal circumstances. But I have heard this before, and I have heard some discussion that there will be inclined to do so. I honestly don't see a situation where rents go up to 9.9 because at some point, you can just bring it back and say, listen, this is not working. We're going to adjust the number. So I think that that's the stick. So if you're looking for a number for me, I think that's a really hard answer. I will say there's a reason why there's a 7.5 number in the legislature. I don't know what ultimately will happen to that number. I don't know what will happen to the other just cause bills that are in the legislature now. I mean, it may be worthwhile to see what will happen because they're moving. So, sorry, I don't, I'm not sure if I answered a question. I don't, I don't see rents going up to 9.9%.
Well, it's a, it's a challenging issue, and I appreciate the input because I'm wrestling with it myself, and I think most of us are. And like I said, the sort of the logical conclusion, 10 is more than 5 and therefore not a good thing. But if you look over a period of time, that's, that's what I'm looking at. Because I think that's more relevant than just comparing 5 to 10. Anybody can do that. But what is the consequence of those two, and particularly a consequence over a period of time? That's what is troubling for me.
Understood.
I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rosa.
Vivo en el área de Canal.
I live in the Canal area.
Tenemos un apartamento de una recámara.
We have a one-room apartment.
Ya, y vivimos solo mi esposo, mi hijo y yo.
And we live there. It's my husband, my son, and I.
Y estamos pagando, estábamos pagando 1,800.
And we were paying 1,800.
Sí, y ahora ya los subieron, ya 150 más.
And they haven't...
Cada año, cada año sube.
They have increased it 150 more, and every year, every year it keeps going up.
Ya, y pues cuando nosotros pedimos algo también no los llegan a arreglar.
And when we ask for something to be fixed, they don't fix it. They don't come over and fix it.
Como que hay preferencias con las personas porque los arreglan a otras personas.
So it seems like there's some sort of a preference with other people because things get fixed for other people.
Y con la estufa.
And with the...
Nosotros...
And with the heater, for example.
¿Cómo la cocina?
Oh, the stoves, for example, we have a...
Nosotros tenemos que comprar nuestras parrillas.
We have to get our own grills.
Los platos para que, para poner nuestras ollas a cocinar, ¿no?
Plates and things where we can use our pans, pots and pans to cook.
Y eso es, ya es cosa, y hay dinero extra ya que nosotros estamos poniendo.
So that's extra money that we are spending.
Ya, pues nosotros les agradeciéramos mucho si nos ayudan.
So we would thank you very much if you can help us in that way.
No solo por mí, no que por todos los que convivimos, ¿verdad?, en el área de Canal, todo eso.
Not just for me, but for all of us who live in the Canal area.
Yeah.
So... Should I leave you this letter?
You can leave it with our city clerk.
Ah, okay.
And thank you for your...
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. My name's Kiki Laporta. I'm speaking to you tonight on this item from the perspective of the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. Our tagline is "Elevating the Conversation at the Intersection of Affordable and Fair Housing and the Environment." The statistics that Mr. Henning presented earlier relative to the amount of housing that's been created in San Rafael in the last five years... relative to the amount of housing that's been created in San Rafael in the last five years, 225 units. Of those, more than 72% were market rate units. All the other categories were less than 28%. I'd also like to point out a theme that MECC has been promoting for a number of years, and that is we have a severe jobs-housing imbalance, but especially in the areas where our cities, towns, and jurisdictions really appreciate the sales tax revenue, but those jobs are low-paying in general and create more cost-burdened renters. And we are creating a lot of new housing for, not a lot, but certainly some housing for market rate, more executive-type positions. But who is going to serve those positions? Who is going to do all of the things that we need others to help us do because we're busy at the office? We at MECC support the statements of Linda Jackson, Howard Schwartz, David Levin, Casey Epp, and others who have spoken tonight, as well as the community who have appealed to you to set your threshold for mandatory mediation at 5%. Among other things, if a landlord raises a rent 4.9% a year and does it over years, with the flattening of the market, that unit will soon no longer be eligible for a rate increase because it will be above market. I think the market will find its own level. So, I'm hoping that you follow the guidelines, and I also want to thank you so very deeply for your thoughtful interest and research into this very important topic for our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Kiki.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Doring. I've lived here in Marin County for over 20 years, and I really appreciate your thoughtful attention and discussion to these important issues. I really love living here in San Rafael. And you asked if we could think about two important questions, and one is funding mediation. I was thinking, maybe there could be some kind of setup where owners could pay an additional portion in their business license fee, and if there was no mediation initiated, they could see a credit in the next year's license fee. That would also incentivize people maybe to keep this a little more reasonable in their dealings with their tenants. I did a little quick math. I listened to the mother of three children that makes $15 an hour. She can afford rent of $780 a month. There is nothing in Marin at $780 a month for four people. So, I really am strongly supportive of renter protection measures. The race issue of the county, the Latinx population is almost 16%. However, homeownership in the Latinx population is only 26%. So, the majority of the Latinx residents here in the county are renters. Percentage of Latinx people living below the poverty line, 21.1% as opposed to 5.5% of white people. So, I think these laws are going to protect a lot of people, including aging people, and it's a rapidly aging population we have here. But I think without these important ordinances, it will severely impact the most vulnerable populations that we have. So, I ask you to please continue to consider 5% mandatory mediation and just cause eviction. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment, and don't take this personally. It's a quarter after 10:00. And if you have new information, please, please share it with us. If however, you've heard the point made, we probably get it by now because we need to draw this to conclusions so we can provide staff some additional direction based on your input. So, if you could, take that in consideration. Sir?
It's just two more minutes. My name's Herb Taylor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak my mind this evening. As a resident and homeowner here in San Rafael, I do feel it's my duty to express my concerns with the watered-down version that is being presented tonight for tenant protections. I'd like to appeal to you both on an emotional and economic perspective. I live less than six short blocks from here in the West End Sun Valley community. On my street alone, five of the 12 residences are rental units. Instead of having the ability to build a community in my neighborhood, my partner and I have experienced a revolving door of transient neighbors as the higher rents continue to move at an accelerated speed. How do you establish a well-rounded community in what has become a social model culture lacking any diversity? Several years ago, we lost a wonderful neighbor, a grandmother, who had to move because of a 40% rent increase. She added to the heart of our neighborhood. Something loved was definitely lost. From an economic perspective, I don't understand why we wouldn't keep the already outrageous rents in the Bay Area from continuing to climb without some forms of protection. I'd love to know how many of you on the city council have actually looked at the majority of the rental properties in San Rafael. They have not been updated or invested in since the 80s. They don't add more value to our neighborhoods. These inflated rents are not going back into the properties. In addition, tenants who have families are more likely to spend more money in the community and bring more growth to the businesses in our community if most of their money doesn't feed these outrageous increases. Support our neighborhoods, support our businesses, support just cause and support mandatory mediation at 5% for all properties, and keep it consistent with the county. As this is the city with the most rental properties in Marin, let's be the frontrunner and the leader for better tenant protections. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Fernando Barreto. And I was thinking about your question, Mayor Phillips, regarding, hey, what will be the answer of the market whenever we approve the mandatory mediation of 5%? You were saying something about the 4.9. I believe that that's already happening, and that's part of the testimonies we have heard tonight about the community, right? There's any sort of abuse happening nowadays from different landlords, right? And the intention of this is to somehow establish certain base so we all actually can be safe in here. I was also thinking about Councilmember Collins' thoughts at the beginning of, not exactly talking about 5 or 10%, but the impact that any of this increase could have in any household, bearing in mind all the different levels that we have according to the socioeconomic statuses, right? Maybe this conversation is related to poverty in San Rafael, to poverty in Marin, right? Where our most vulnerable communities are getting more and more and more poor and subject of displacement, which is a humongous threat for the economic development. We were also, we're listening to Andrew's estimations about this project. Well, maybe we're somewhere in between 25 and 40,000 dollars, right? To launch this project. We were also, we're talking about maybe seeing an increase of the rate of homelessness here in the city, right? And what would be the price of that? What would be the cost of having new homeless as a result of this housing crisis? That you guys have a way actually to start doing something in a sort of innovative way, keeping San Rafael as the benchmark, as the lead of this conversation in Marin, and taking the example of some other cities in the Bay as well? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Beatriz.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Beatriz. Hello. Good evening. My name is Beatriz. I am here because I would like you to help me with a rent control. The reason we're all here present tonight is because, yeah, it's true that the rents are increasing too much. And you, when you ask for something to be fixed? They don't fix anything. For example, in my case, the heater is broken at home. And also, for example, the, how do you call it? The air conditioner? And the smoke detector? And they don't work, and we would like your help with that. And also, there are a lot of roaches and rats. And when things break? The owner says that we should fix it? And that we afterwards, we could discount that from the rent? But sometimes my husband fixes whatever gets broken, but nobody pays him. You know who's going to pay for his time? And also, when my children see the roaches come out, they obviously get scared. And for example, this, last week, I told the owner that the heater was obstructed. And he asked me why was it obstructed, and I had to tell him, well, it's because too many cockroaches come out of there. And he said he'll fix it, but he never showed up. So, I would like to ask, to help us, all of the tenants that live there. And one more thing? When the trash truck comes by? The whole apartment trembles, so I feel like, oh my God, this whole thing is going to come down. So, I would like for the whole apartments to be fixed because they're not fixing anything. And it's all of us that live in the same area, since San Rafael is the same situation for all of us. Thank you.
And thank you for your coming. You have the honor of being the last person that presents this evening.
Really? Good night. I just want to say something. Just ask you, before you decide, please think about all those families that can be affected or benefit with your decision. That's it.
I'm sorry. What was your name, please?
Romel Carrera.
Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't catch it. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Wendy, and I'm a Marin resident of almost 11 years now, and Oakland for 10 years before that. Just cause and mediation should be for all units and should not discriminate. 5%, please, not 10%. It's way, this is all way past due during serious crisis that's not taken seriously. We're losing diversity and community. There are no other places to go when one is evicted. I know because I've been hopelessly looking because of my own no-cause eviction. Despite the new laws, I was a huge part of passing in Fairfax. Mediation makes people talk, and that's a good thing in a world increasingly divided between the have and the have-nots. However, it's not what I would ultimately advocate for as it's not strong enough. I can assure you rents are raising as we speak, and yearly rental increases don't always go towards improvements. I'm saddened to hear the sentiments in the presentation that the city just gave, not wanting to, the sentiment to me sounds like you're not wanting to spend money on renters' rights. And I don't want money taken away from homelessness programs, which there isn't enough of in the first place. Renters need to be educated on any new protective laws, and I can assure you they don't know what their rights are. Treat our rental crisis like it's a crisis. I can assure you it's much worse than you think it is, as many of us have already and are leaving our entire lives here not by choice. Thanks to Kate Cullen for bringing up the ignored race and income issue, and I would add disability and age and people on fixed and very low incomes to it, too. And by the way, Airbnb isn't helping anything for long-term renters, and that keeps getting ignored, too.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas noches a todos.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. We're here tonight. The reason is just like the other people said. It's with respect to the rent control issue. It's increasing way too much. I think that perhaps some of those that are here in front of us. Have heard that most, you know, several people will repeat the same thing over and over. But is it, that's the real, that's the truth of what's happening? About four or five years ago, I told the apartment manager to fix the bathroom. And he sent a person, and that person destroyed the bathroom for about a week. And the person who arrived to fix the bathroom arrived drunk. And that's not correct. That's, it's not, it's not good to do that. And you're paying your rent so they can fix things and keep them right. I think that all of us here tonight, all the people that are present here, we don't, we wouldn't like to have a drunk person arriving to fix things at your place. So, we would be very thankful if you can help us with everything that was already exposed here. And so, thank you.
And thank you. Thank you very much. Seeing no one in the queue, in the line, I'm going to assume that everyone has had an opportunity to speak that wished to, so I appreciate, and we collectively thank you for the input. It's a process we're going through, like I said, tonight's the first night of a total of three to get this right, and that's our objective. So, I think it's fair to say that we heard you, we appreciate your comments, we can address a portion of them. Frankly, not all of the points you've brought up. That's beyond the scope of this evening's discussion. Not that it's not important and relevant, but it's, just to be clear. So, thank you. Closed, public, and return for further input, reaction, comment, direction to staff, starting with, who'd like to start? Starting with Andrew.
Well, let me share some comments, and I may have a few after my colleagues speak because as most of you know, or many of you know, under the Brown Act, we're not in a position to talk about these matters among us except in public. So, this is our first opportunity to really engage beyond the introduction we received back in February when the matter was brought to us initially. So, for example, the committee work we did with the help of David Levin, you were here, I can't see you, but, and others, and the mayor, of course, we were able to converse very openly there, but now we have a chance to talk to all of you and to each other. So, a couple of big issues. One is, why aren't we modeling, pardon me, why aren't we imitating exactly the county's ordinance? I alluded to it earlier in my comment, right after Linda Jackson's thoughts. I'm not familiar with what Nevada has done, but I am familiar with what Fairfax has done. And Fairfax made changes to the county's ordinance to better fit their community. Most of the changes that we've made, or proposed rather, in the subcommittee are not controversial. They've been characterized very generally as weakening the ordinance vis-à-vis the counties, but by and large, they're simply They've been characterized very generally as weakening the ordinance vis a vis the counties, but, uh, by and large, they're simply clarifying, balancing, et cetera. There are three notable areas where we have departed from the county that have come up this evening and I would like to address those. But before I do so, I'd like to address the other overarching issue that I think is important to mention, and this, again, from my perspective on the subcommittee. Our charge at the outset was to look very closely at the county's ordinances and to see to what extent we should incorporate those into ordinances appropriate for San Rafael. That is, on mandatory mediation and just cause. At no point did the county, in its promulgation of its just cause and mandatory mediation ordinances, address the very important issue of race and income, income inequality, disability. All the issues that are at the heart of our fair housing laws at the state and the federal level and the extent to which they fail to achieve their goals. Very, very important issues, but it really wasn't part of our charge. For us to address those issues would require us to go back and do what the county didn't do and spend a lot of time on this issue. And with the urgency that we feel we're under, and let's remind ourselves, it took the county about three years to go through this process that we're seeking to do in about six months. So, fair housing and the impediments there too, we're going to have to reserve that for another day, as important as they are. So getting to the three issues that have surfaced from many of the people speaking this evening, that I'm finding myself increasingly sympathetic to, that represent deviations on our part from the county's ordinances, they all come in the mandatory mediation ordinance. They are the trigger, the threshold, five percent versus 10 percent, that would trigger the mandatory, the mediation obligation. Whether three units or all units should be the, um, the units in question, and who pays the cost. On each of those, I found myself listening and agreeing with most of the speakers this evening. And what once represented my thinking and was the recommendations of the subcommittee, I find myself moving over to the point of view expressed here this evening and the point of view enshrined in the county's mandatory mediation ordinance. So for that reason, although I'm still concerned, as I'm hearing the mayor is as well, that there may be unintended consequences of adopting a five percent threshold, I think it's probably the fairer way to go, based upon what we've heard, what I've heard from the community this evening and at, in my meetings and discuss, discussions with other stakeholders during this process. On the issue of whether all units or only three-plus units should be subject to mandatory mediation, while I think there are good reasons not to include all units, meaning single-family and duplex units, I'm inclined to move in that direction and cover all units that would be obligated to go through mediation process if initiated by an aggrieved tenant, most likely. Or landlord, but most likely a tenant. And then as to the cost, I think that if we do this, perhaps, whether it's explicitly or not explicitly on a pilot basis, I think the cost, at least for the first year, is something that the city should be prepared to bear. I thought it was a very interesting suggestion by one of the speakers near the end. I think it was Lisa Doring's comment, but I'm not sure, that perhaps we can find some room within the business license fee to create a fund that would be used to defray the expenses the city incurs to pay for the mediation costs. That's a real possibility, but I think until we get this off the ground, the city should commit up to $40,000, to use the numbers that you, that you calculated, Andrew. Up to $40,000 in the first year to pay the cost of the mediations that do occur at the request of tenants who are subject to the program. I think though, after the first year, we should look into whether or not the business license fee can and should be adjusted, perhaps, to help defray some of the cost. But also look into what Andrew mentioned in his opening remarks, a, a renter review board, which might consist of volunteers from the community who are versed in the needs and concerns of our community, who speak different languages, who can provide a service to us at no cost and defray much of the expense, and maybe more in tune with the needs of renters, tenants coming forward than perhaps professional mediators in another context. So, those are my comments. I, I'm very grateful for what I've heard this evening. Because while I've spoken to plenty of people leading up till tonight, it isn't until now that I'm really hearing from people most aggrieved. The people who are in the units that might be subject to what it is that we're being asked to do, and so I thank you for coming out this evening.
I'm gonna comment only because Andrew and I did serve on the same committee and frankly, we were in the same place this evening for a variety of reasons. I've heard, loud and clear as did Andrew, I would, Andrew, I would suggest that the preference in our community is five percent. I think that we need to track that pretty carefully over the next year or so, assuming this goes forward, which I think it will, to see if, uh, we, we in fact experience what most of us hope going into this. Like I said, our preference was, and our desire was, on behalf of the community, or committee, excuse me, to, uh, to look at it over a period of time, not just a single year, and, and see what the consequences were over that period of time. The strong preference seems to be the five percent. I came into this persuaded, uh, through various discussions I had with county members and other individuals, that, uh, that perhaps a shift from the 10 to 5 makes some sense, and I think it's gonna be far more accepted by the community to do so. And again, we'll track to make sure we, we get the result that we're hoping to. And then with data, we can decide to keep it in place, assuming we go in this direction again. Keep it in place or further modify it if it makes some sense with, with more history. The three units, uh, versus all units, I'm, I'm persuaded as well that that's probably more favorable. And so therefore, I'm leaning in that direction and will, uh, will direct staff from, from this chair. The others may have different viewpoints, but from this chair, I'll direct staff to, uh, to make that all inclusive, that is, all units rather than those of three or more. Let's see, what else do I have? Funding, I, I agree. Let's, let's, uh, let's, let's, uh, not let this be a hang-up for us to put it in place. We, uh, we don't have a lot of extra funds, I think we all know that, but I think this is a good use of funds over a limited period of time until we sort out a better approach, if there is one. And so I too will be in favor of the city funding the program, at least for the initial year, and, and we'll wrestle with it to, to decide whether or not there, um, there is a better approach, in which case we'll change it and we'll go that way. One thing that concerns me, um, beyond those comments, and modify them to, uh, to be more aligned with the county, which I think, frankly, we've made some improvements to the county's program. That was our intent. It wasn't just to take it and rubber stamp it and let's go, but rather make it better and more unique and more accommodating to San Rafael. I think that in some ways, that was done, and thanks once again to Councilmember McCullough for really taking the lead on, on this. And so, I mean, great, indebted to Andrew for the work that he has done. The one thing though that concerns me some is expectation. Recognize what we're doing this evening. We are, we are putting in place a process to address increases in, uh, rent proposed by the owners. They may have, in some cases, I'm sure they do, and, and, uh, they'll come to us, or perhaps the mediation group, to justify their, their increase. And if they put a substantial amount of additional capital into the, the building, that's, that's what our system is based on. And they have to wrestle with that each and every day. Do I put X amount in for improvements that are sorely needed? And many of you have witnessed, uh, the improvements are in fact necessary. On the other hand, is it reasonable to expect them to fully absorb that? Uh, in our economic system, probably not. So there is gonna be continual, uh, balancing act there. And so I don't want you, uh, to go away thinking that we have addressed this matter as, as rent control might so do. This is not rent control. It is not the same. It is bringing the parties together to hopefully come to a conclusion that is satisfactory to both, but it's not more than that. The county says not more than that, Fairfax not more than that. No one, uh, at this point in the, the county is, is doing more than that. And, uh, so don't, please don't go away illusion that we are going to step in and put a cap on rents and we're going to address some of the issues that were brought to us. Not that they're not valid, but that's not the purpose of this, uh, this particular matter. There is another matter that I'll, I'll bring up at a later date that has me equally concerned, and that is, you folks know, opportunity zone. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about that and I won't go into it now because it'll take the rest of the night. But there is another concern that's out there that, uh, I think David and I ran into with the two cases we mentioned. No one brought it up tonight, but it's out there, and so I hope to get ahead of that in some ways. So, with that, um, further comment, uh, John, or Kate, I'm just working my way back and forth here.
Thank you. Appreciate all the folks coming out here and obviously, it's, it's, it's not falling on deaf ears, the concerns that are in our community and, and everybody has expressed that so eloquently. I, I tend to respectfully disagree with, with what will be the, seems to be the majority of the council here on this ordinance. And, and it's not for the lack of that, you know, do I think that, that rents might have been raised higher than they should have been? Or, um, that they could continue to be raising higher in the future? My concern is, is that, that these ordinances that we're, we're putting forth don't have any teeth in them. To the extent that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, that if a, if a landlord gets called to mediation because it's over five percent or 10 percent, the justification for them to say why they're increasing their rent does not have to be, you know, significantly documented in any way, shape or form. They just have to show up to the mediation, bargain, and what I understand is in good faith. But if they don't come to an agreement, there is no binding nature to this mediation, which means that a landlord could still say, I'm gonna raise your rent 10 percent. I need to because my inflation is up three and a half percent. MMWD just put an increase on the property tax bill. The grand jury just announced that they want to create a JPA for fire protection and put another piece on the property tax bill. So I'm gonna have all of these things on there and to me that adds up, and I need to have a reasonable rate of return to my investment, so I can go ahead and that's my justification for it, and I'm gonna do the charge. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So, so being that we put forth a mandatory mediation in place, the landlord comes and mediates in good faith, there is nothing that prevents them from still raising the rent to 10 percent, or 12 percent, or 14 percent, or whatever it is, or whatever the market will bear. So if, if we're going to put a policy in place, and I don't want to lead, as the mayor said, we don't want to lead anybody to believe that this is the end-all be-all for renter protections. We don't want people leaving here today that says that if this goes to the next step where we put forth an ordinance and the following step on that, and we pass that ordinance to print, and there is this five percent, um, level before mandatory mediation comes in, it doesn't mean that the rents are not gonna increase. It doesn't mean they're not gonna increase by more than five percent, or 10 percent, or 4.9 percent every year for the next three or four years, or forever. It is what the market is going to bear for those landlords. And if they determine that they can have their rental unit raise a rate of five percent and still have a tenant in there, and as we've seen, that doesn't seem to be a problem with a three percent vacancy rate in San Rafael. That there are people out there that are willing to pay the rent. And this number of 30 percent of income as affordability, well, that might be the case. But if people are willing to pay 40 percent of their income for rent, or 50 percent of their income to rent because they want to live here, they will do that. So, um, it's, it's difficult for me to say we're gonna institute a program, we're gonna set aside city funds, that is, that, in my opinion, is not going to change the problem that we have here. And as I said in my earlier comments, the problem we have here is not a rent problem, it's a lack of housing problem. And until we address that, and until we change some of the rules that we have to make it less onerous for people to build, to build good units, to put them in place, and to say, you know, it's gonna be 10 percent, 15 percent affordable, 20 percent affordable. And we take away the barriers for those folks to do that, then, then we're gonna have this issue going forward. Because if we built 200 units in the past five years, and in the past two years, 45 to 50 units? And most of those are at market rate or above, it's not, it's not gonna change because we don't, we have two, we have population increasing in San Rafael. We don't have enough units to, to reach those, so the rents are gonna continue to go until the landlords cannot fill them with folks. And I just don't see, I just don't see this doing anything other than us setting aside money for this. And, and you might say that that is a good cause to set money for, but I don't believe that it's going to, um, change the problem that we're facing with today. So, um, my, my take is, is that, that we shouldn't have this ordinance in place, that we need to look more at the root cause of this, which is the lack of housing, and put our energy and our focus on that. And that might take a couple of years, or three or four years, but I think the market forces will dictate what happens with the rents. And as rents reach a point where they can no longer, you know, be afforded, they will come down. I, I don't know if that's the right or wrong answer, but I, I believe that's what's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. Uh, like my colleagues, thank you all for coming down tonight and sharing your personal stories, especially those who came up and, um, might not have spoke English and, and used a translator service. That shows a lot of courage and bravery and shows that this is a really important issue to our community. In addition to those that came tonight, we also had probably 50 emails, many, many emails from people who took the time to write us and ask us to support these renter protection policies. And I, I take a little bit of issue of what Councilmember McCullough said about it not relating to the fair housing impediments. It absolutely is related. So even though, uh, it's maybe not a direct policy, these numbers absolutely, are the, these ordinances will protect our most vulnerable. The aging, the Latinx, disabled, thank you who had mentioned that, people who are lower income, and that was a fact I was trying to find earlier. I finally found it, that owner incomes in San Rafael are two times that of renters. So those groups, these protections help protect those populations. And the Fair Housing Group, the steering committee of the county, did ask for these renter protections to take place. So that, so there is a connection there, and I, I think for us to try to tease them apart and say they're not related, to, to me is, um, not the appropriate way to look at it. They are related. Specifically, um, at the issues we talked about, I thank you to the subcommittee for the work that you've done and thank you for hearing what our community said and your willingness, uh, from what you've already said on the DA's to support the five percent. I share that, um, I share that belief or that, that policy, um, protecting all the households, so all the units, not just the ones that are three-plus units. Again, uh, the subcommittee said that they reconsidered and that is something they would approve. And I don't know if this was mentioned by my colleagues, but we did hear from the community, uh, the community to keep the appeal process, to figure out how to do that. To keep the written agreement after the mediation, so there's a written record. And I'm intrigued by the rental board. It's an interesting idea, but I think there is a gravitas that goes with working with the DA's office. So I would hope that we would continue to figure out how to do that and have the consistency across, um, across the county and San Rafael. So I think those are my, that's it. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I just want to, uh, comment, John, I, I agree, um, and I think, you know, if you get in the abstract and go back to school and you're in your econ class, I, I agree with the principle, but I also look at, um, because it frankly has a, a limited amount of teeth. It's not, mandatory mediation doesn't mean that it's mandatory, that a, that a decision is made by an arbitrary party to draw a conclusion. It's bringing the parties together to hopefully come to a, maybe a, a better place. And that's my only point here, under this provision. It worked in those two cases, and if it had been in place, it probably would have been even more effective. But without anything, let's say, without the two parties coming together, again, thanks to David, without the two parties coming together, it would have been a total mess. We would have had, I met with the, uh, the, uh, San Rafael School Superintendent, and he was saying there are gonna be a number of children, and he's not one to, you know, contrive this, that are gonna be out on the street and, and, uh, 38 evictions. So he brought it together even without this and, and, and was able to come to something without any teeth. I mean, they were just going back and forth with discussion, as I understand it. And, and so I think this facilitates that, and hopefully it will be a benefit to both parties to enhance their understanding. And that's what, uh, is driving me on this thing. Because you're right, economically, you are right. And, and let's face it, San Rafael, like it or not, is not gonna build a significant number of new units. It's just not gonna happen. And without the additional supply, demand will remain and, and therefore, the, uh... And without the additional supply, demand will remain and, and therefore the, the rents are going to be probably pretty uncomfortable for a lot of our, of our residents. I wish I could say it differently, but that's, that's reality. So what I'm saying, John, is I'm agreeing with you in principle, but this may facilitate and help in certain situations. And for me, there's enough dire situations that we ought to step up and do what we can in this contest. So that's, that's what's driving me. Mayor, Beth.
Thank you. Due to the lateness of the hour and the fact that we have another agenda item, I will make my comments very brief. I agree with the mayor that Councilmember Gamblin is correct on economics and the limited scope of, over which we have control. That said, I will be greatly persuaded by the recommendation of our Subcommittee that studies the issue. We use that process for most issues that confront the council, and that's how we get our business done here. And out of respect for their work and their analysis, I would, will likely be persuaded by their ultimate recommendation. That said, I would ask our staff, and when it comes back to us, if they could address two topics. One, the logic of the number, whether it's 5 percent or 10 percent. I'm aware that we have recently approved refuse rates increases of 10 percent. The Marin Municipal Water District is proposing 20 percent rate increases. Inflation is somewhere around 4 percent. Using those as just touchstone numbers, find me some logic to how you came, how you came up with whatever number it is that you recommend, other than just because it's, it's someone else's number. To be honest, 5 percent seems too close to inflation and a trigger, that's the normal number, seems too low. But, and 10 percent is, is twice that, seems like it could be, could be too high. So if you could address the logic, the other topic I'd like you to address is the unintended consequences. What is the realistic probability that landlords will put in place sort of prophylactic rate increases because they fear they won't be able to do it the next year? So we'll see 4.9, 4.9, 4.9, out of fear that they, they won't be able to get an increase at a, at a later time. And finally, on the issue of having small landlord, land owners, well, small, few, small, single-unit landlords, including all of them in this regulation, could that have a chilling effect on landlords bringing units to, to the, to the rental market? That is, landlords will be unwilling to put units on the market because they will be covered by, by these protections. So those two unintended consequences and some logic for the number, and I would be willing to, I would be persuaded by the Subcommittee's recommendation.
Thank you. Those excellent points, and thanks for, thanks for making those. This evening, we were charged with accepting the report and providing staff input. Have we satisfied that before we go on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, definitely. We have here is, what I'm hearing is a consensus for, I think, the outline that Vice Mayor McCullough stated, which is a 5 percent increase applying to all units, not just three units or more, and the city paying for the cost of the first year as we look into alternative measures for that. I understand that there's some questions we have to answer, particularly those that Councilmember Bushy just raised. What I don't know, and I could ask the, the Subcommittee if you want to respond now or at a later date, with those changes, they're, they're not significantly different from, from the, what we had thought of going into today. So we could bring this back as early as the next meeting. I'm not sure if the Subcommittee would like to meet separately again and go through some of the topics, in which case we would now bring it back at the next meeting. But if you have any thoughts on that now, that would be great.
I'll ask your opinion.
I think I'd like to give that a little more thought.
Okay.
Some interesting issues have been raised on the dais and from the public, and it, it may be warranted to dig a little further in and not bring this back at the very next meeting, although I think we're awfully close.
Okay. Well, we have enough direction to, to start putting together the ordinances so we can work with the Subcommittee and then bring it back when it's ready.
And once again, thank you all for helping us with this and the comments. Is there a motion with regard to the acceptance of the report at this point?
I remember that we accept the report.
Second.
And recognizing that's not, we're not voting on accepting the report, but rather having received the report to further modify it, just so we're clear. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
Aye. The matter curious, 5-0. Thanks, everyone. And we'll be, we'll be back to you. We'll move on then to Climate Change Action Plan.
Once again, Cory. Once again, Cory gets it. This is the second time, isn't this the second time?
Like, second time, but every time. It's just the way the timing works, so.
You know?
I don't, it just happens.
Can we have order, please?
We'll chastise him if he doesn't pull out. Cory.
Hi.
Good evening. You have 30 seconds.
And I can't even find my presentation.
Okay, a minute.
Thank you so much. You were amazing.
Oh, good evening. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
My presentation's not here.
She's on it.
Okay. Somewhere I got, must have gotten closed or something. Okay. All right. Are we ready? No pressure, Cory. No pressure. Okay. Hey. Great.
Hey, John?
Yes.
Would you mind closing that door?
Thank you.
How many times have I been asked to cut a 20-minute presentation down to seven minutes?
Hard to keep an audience at 11 o'clock.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'll introduce Christine Rourke. I'll reintroduce her. You've met her many times before, but I want to give her some shout-out for all the work she did on the Climate Action Plan. She is amazing at taking all the information from meetings and from people's comments and then writing them in very succinct ways, and that really shows in our Climate Action Plan. And then she did all the calculations as well. So we're very grateful for Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, being a member of that. I've had the pleasure of going around the region and seeing other ways that people do things, and I think we have the best way that we do it here with the staff working group. So in front of you are four items for consideration. Our Climate Action Plan, of course, is the star of the show. We need to adopt an addendum to the General Plan 2020 Environmental Impact Report. In order to do that, we have the greenhouse gas inventory and the two-year priorities sustainability work plan. It's a little out of order in terms of how we're going to adopt it. We're going to go through the order that's in the body of your staff report, which is basically to start with the Climate Action Plan. I always have to have a state of the climate. It's never good, so I won't go into it in great detail. A lot of impacts, including record lows for Arctic and Antarctic sea ice. And one of the worst things that I saw was just the idea that worldwide hunger and that malnutrition had been continually decreasing until recently, and it's increasing again mainly to the effects due to natural disasters, mostly related to climate change. However, we do have some positive things happening here locally and reason to be optimistic, whether it's MCE Clean Energy, which started the whole CCA movement, which is happening up and down the state now, the Marin Carbon Project, which is an innovative way of drawing the carbon back down into the soil while enhancing healthy local plant life for grazing, the Marin School of Environmental Leadership, which started here, is here, and now is also expanding throughout the state. Local leadership and awards that we've gotten. And the other thing I'll mention is that our Climate Action Plan is being looked at by several other cities in Marin right now for adoption as well. Matter of fact, if we don't adopt it tonight, San and San will probably adopt our Climate Action Plan before us. So, moving on, the reason why we're adopting the climate, or moving forward with the Climate Action Plan for 2030 is our original one was geared towards 2020. Scientists have said that we need to get an 80 percent reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 if we don't go off the cliff. And so interim targets were set. We've also completed most of the things in our early Climate Action Plan as well. Background, as you remember, we have a 20-member working group. We've had about 15 months of meetings and research. We did subject matter experts from a variety of fields, telling us about what's real on the ground. We brought the draft to you in October 15th. This is not substantially different from the draft that we brought you then. We also had the Bay Area Air Quality Management District review it, and we brought it to the Planning Commission as well. So a lot of community input and some more kudos to all the folks that have been on the Climate Action Plan and stuck with us for 15 months and reviewed a lot of documents, gave a lot of input, asked a lot of good questions, including five students, some of which may still be here.
Oh, yay.
Amazing.
Toss it out. Way to go.
Don't go into politics. So the plan structure is up here, and you've seen this before as well. The first five things in this are the things that we can calculate the emissions reductions from. So those are the things, so we're not double counting that we're, we're going to be focusing on. Community engagement underpins the whole thing. At this point, it's really all about community engagement. Implementation and monitoring is just committing to bring back annual reports every year to tell you how we're doing. So all told, about 98,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent that we need to reduce by 2030. Where's that, where is this going to come from? So this just sort of shows the areas where we're going to get the majority of the emissions reduction. But one key fact is that whereas in first Climate Action Plan, the majority of emissions reductions were coming from state or from MCE, now the majority of reductions are going to come from our local actions, so the things that we're doing here locally. And when we only have 1 percent of the greenhouse gas emissions coming from our local government operations, it's, you know, going to be a challenge. And I also like to ask people if they've ever reduced anything in their lives 40 percent. So I'll quickly go through high level again. I know you've read the staff report. I know you've heard the Climate Action Plan in the past, so I'll try to go through it fairly quickly. But here are the things that are in our low-carbon transportation section of the plan, which is really about zero-emissions vehicles and getting people into active transportation and public transportation. Energy efficiency section, it's really about finding ways to encourage more energy efficiency. We've got a built environment, so we've got to find a way to deal with that built environment. We don't have a lot of new development. Also applying energy efficiency, building smaller remodels, and then trying to incentivize and pair incentives and rebates and technical assistance with, with the regulations as well. So it's all about streamlining. And then one thing to consider is adopting policies for benchmarking energies and facilities. So it's much like when you go to buy your car and there's a fuel efficiency rating, you would have a energy efficiency rating on a building as well. Renewable energy is about two key things. One is the 100 percent renewable options that our utilities offer, and the other is about increasing solar and other renewable energy right here in the county. In terms of the other sections of the plan, just list a bunch of the key actions here. Not as many emissions reductions in these areas, but it's about recycled water and gray water. Again, that sequestration idea, we've got 80 percent plus of our land that's off limits to development. So how do we take something like the Marin Carbon Project and find opportunities to utilize that land in ways that can draw the, the carbon back down? Because without that, the world won't meet its emissions reduction targets. Adaptation's in here lightly. It's basically giving some parameters and saying, "Let's commit to adaptation planning." And then the other two are around this whole conundrum about reducing all the emissions stuff that goes to landfill, knowing the fact that when we do have mandates, we tend to have more contamination as well. And so are we going to get at that through an ordinance, or are we going to get at that more through looking at the processing of recyclables and composting at facilities? And then we wanted to frame not only the plan, but then our implementation, just through the lens of the Sustainable Development Goals, which are the three-pronged, making sure that we're not just talking about the economy, that you're really looking strongly at the, I mean, not the environment, but looking at the economy and social equity, and making sure that when we implement, that we're taking those into consideration and the people that are going to be most affected, as well as all the interest in the, in the, in the community. So I'll stop there just briefly to see if there's any questions about the Climate Action Plan before Christine goes into the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and then we'll wrap it up with the two-year priorities.
Everybody good?
Okay. I know you've heard this in October, so Christine.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Cory, and good evening, Mayor Phillips and members of the council. So this year, Marin Climate and Energy Partnership prepared two inventories for you. One of them is the community-wide inventory, which we did for year 2016, which is the latest year that we have all the data we need so we can prepare the inventory. We've been doing those annual inventories for San Rafael for a few years now. And then we've also done the municipal inventory, which is your government operations. We're doing those about every five years because they're really data-intensive, so it's hard to do them a lot. First, I want to just briefly go over the community-wide inventory. Our inventory is what we call an inbound inventory. It's not exactly that, but it's close enough. And that means that we're counting emissions that occur, that are generated here within Marin, within San Rafael. So we're counting things like emissions from natural gas and electricity and fuel used in vehicles, et cetera. And that, that totals about 17 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents per household every year in San Rafael. There's also a consumption-based inventory, and we talk about this a little bit in the Climate Action Plan as well. Consumption-based is a broader way of looking at all of the emissions that a household will generate using upstream emissions. So we're counting emissions from mining, growing, producing, packaging, shipping, all of the, of the goods that are purchased and used and consumed in, by San Rafael households. That would also count air travel, food production. When you look at that total, that comes up to about 44 metric tons. We don't do consumption-based inventories because it's just, we don't have all of the data that we need in order to reliably make these inventories and then track them over time. So there was an inventory done in 2015. The Air District had funded some of these consumption-based inventories for all Bay Area jurisdictions, but it's kind of a point in time. So we just use it to understand that, you know, we're only looking at a subset of the total emissions. So this is a look at the emissions by sector. One thing, couple of things to, the big takeaway is, transportation is the largest sector, and it's getting larger every year because we're reducing the emissions from electricity in particular, but also natural gas. So transportation emissions are now 62 percent. 85 percent of those emissions are passenger vehicles. The non-residential energy and the residential energy are also the two second-largest sectors here, and that's natural gas and electricity consumption in homes and in non-residential So kind of the big takeaway is that emissions were down 18 percent community-wide since 2005. So this is the 2020 state goal, which means that we've met, actually exceeded, the 2020 state goal, which was to reduce emissions 15 percent below 2005 levels. The city is on track to meet the 2020 local goal, which is 25 percent below 2005 emissions. The next, the next milestone is 2030. This is what the Climate Change Action Plan is geared towards meeting, is 40 percent below that 2020 state goal line. And then eventually, where we need to get by 2050 is 80 percent below. So we still have a ways to go, but we're making really good progress. Just very quickly, looking at some of the major sectors, energy use, we see that electricity use is down, it's 9 percent since 2005. A lot of that has to do about, with energy efficiency, also kind of more renewable energy, solar energy coming online. Emissions are down 45 percent, and that's due to the lower carbon intensity of electricity. Our PG&E electricity is much cleaner than it was in 2005, and MCE electricity is even a little bit cleaner than PG&E in 2016. When we look at natural gas use, that was actually up between 2015 and 2016. 2016 was a colder year than 2015, so we needed more natural gas to heat buildings, but overall it's down 10 percent since 2005. That sort of reflects a warming world in general. We know that natural gas consumption is very closely correlated with outdoor temperatures. Moving on to transportation, vehicle miles traveled are actually up 3 percent since 2005, but transportation emissions are down, and that's really due to better improvements in fuel efficiency, and also to a small degree in 2016, to the use of alternatively-fueled vehicles like electric vehicles. 2016 was a colder year than 2015, so we needed more natural gas to heat buildings, but overall, it's down 10% since 2005. That sort of reflects a warming world in general. We know that natural gas consumption is very closely correlated with outdoor temperatures. Moving on to transportation, vehicle miles traveled are actually up 3% since 2005, but transportation emissions are down, and that's really due to better improvements in fuel efficiency, and also to a small degree in 2016, to the use of alternatively-fueled vehicles like electric vehicles. And then, finally, in the waste and water sectors, landfill waste, I've said this before, it hit a low in 2011, right after the Great Recession and the housing bust. We had our lowest, but it's been going up every year since then. So, waste disposal actually increased between 2015 and 2016. Waste emissions were still 16% below 2005 levels, so we managed to hang on to some of those reductions that we had achieved. And then, looking at the water sector, per capita water use has declined 25% since 2005, which is great news. Emissions have gone down even more, and that's because of both the use of MCE electricity by MMWD, and then some of the water, about 20, 25%, comes from Sonoma County, and Sonoma County uses 100% renewable electricity for their pumping and treating and conveying of, of the water to the water users. So, moving on to the government operations inventory, this is a look at where the emissions are coming from by sector, pretty evenly distributed among all of the sectors. And when we look at the individuals, first of all, totally, emissions are down 16% since 2005. Emissions are down 9% in buildings and facilities, and that really is, again, due to that lower carbon intensity of electricity. Vehicle fleet, fuel consumption is up since 2005, and that was mostly due to diesel use. Public lighting emissions are down 47%. Down, electricity in general was down about 10% in the public lighting sector. That's because the city is moving to LED conversions by 2016, not all, just some of the lights have been converted and traffic signals have been converted. Waste is up 10%. We looked at the causes of that, and it looks like in 2016, the Public Works Department was collecting a lot of waste that had been kind of dumped in the public right away in the open space and in parks. Also, the recycling bins, the, the, the public bins on the street cans and in parks, a lot of the recycling bins are having greater rates of contamination, and Marin sanitary services noted that across many other counties, so towns. So, what's happening is that those bins are contaminated, so they're ending up in the landfill instead of actually being recycled. Finally, the commute, employee commute sector is down 40%, and that is mostly due to improvement in the fuel efficiency of the vehicles that the, that the San Rafael employees are using to commute to work. So, if you have any questions about the inventories, perhaps I should answer those questions now before turning it back over to Cory?
Doesn't appear.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. Well, heading to our two-year sustainability priorities. As you know, we used to bring annual sustainability priorities, and this year, we decided to do two years, owing to the fact that most of the things tend to go more than one year before they get completed too. And it gives us a little more flexibility as well to jump on grants or opportunities as they come forward. So, you've seen the two-year priorities in your council document. I'll go through them briefly, and then we can take any questions at the end here. So, first of all, the online tool, very early on in the, in the discussions, Councilmember Collins suggested that she really didn't want to see another PDF that people would download because nobody really downloads PDFs online for plans, and she wanted to see something that was a little more engaging, using digital services and online tools. And so, we kept that in mind throughout the whole process. And one of the key reasons is that, again, we're only 1% of emissions. People need to take action. So, every time somebody touches the climate action plan from here on, they're going to understand that they are part of the emissions equation, and that in order for us to meet our goals, they have to take action. And that means partnering with all of our partners. We don't need to reinvent the wheel a lot. In some cases, there's a lot of great nonprofits and community partners out there doing great work. For instance, our utilities are doing most of the work and most of the rebates and things around energy efficiency and all that. We need to do a better job promoting them, getting people to them, and finding out through behavior change, what are the things, the obstacles in their way. And so, we're also working with digital services and open government to make it mobile-friendly and make sure that we have all those resources in there as well. In terms of low-carbon transportation, the early actions are, first, to develop policies and programs to encourage zero emissions vehicles. That's really where the majority of our emissions reductions are going to come from in the transportation area. And as Christine said, the majority of it is around passenger vehicles, and that's where the EV space is, and it's growing rapidly. And then, another reason, thing that we need to do is expand our EV charging network so that people are charging more during the day when the electricity is cleaner, so that there's opportunities for people at workplace. So, if you're living in an apartment complex and you can't put an EV charger, you've got a place to do it, so people see the norming effect of seeing that EVs are normal and that there's, there's chargers everywhere and that the range anxiety goes away. We'll also be promoting, of course, Marin commutes and other programs like that. In terms of energy efficiency, we're working with the county. The new green building codes are coming this year. They're going to have to be adopted by the end of the year, so we need to be working community-wide again to make sure that similarly to other things that have been talked about tonight, when if you go to a counter, if you're a contractor and you go to counters across the county, you can understand, know that you're going to have very similar things. And also, to be looking at, if we're going to do reach codes, what's that going to look like, and how can we all agree on that? And how can we make sure that when we do things, that we're doing them as streamlined as possible, so the process is easy for people? And then, again, when you walk out with your regulations, can you walk out with all the incentives and some technical assistance as well? In terms of renewable energy, it comes down to those things. Again, we're going to be promoting deep green and solar choice, which is the 100% renewable options for both of our utilities, and then looking at opportunities for solar, and also looking with the county for opportunities for solar plus storage, plus electric vehicle charging, to find some prototypes and proof of concepts here. It's a little expensive right now, but there's also a lot of incentives out there to try to make this happen, knowing that this is going to be important going forward. And then, some of the other early actions are to work with our local stakeholders to find some funds to do adaptation planning. As you said and saw in the staff report, Cora Madera received a few hundred thousand dollars from Caltrans to be able to do that. I think we're well-positioned to be able to do that as well. And then, explore the idea of mandatory composting and recycling early. SB 1383 regs are being written right now. They're going to probably mandate that we do that by 2022 or 2023, so we should look at getting a jump on that and figuring out how to do it well and do it efficiently. And then, the other thing is to be looking at this whole idea of the economy again. Are there levers? Are there opportunities that we can actually consciously create the economy that we want? Or is it really just all about energy efficiency again? You know, are there other opportunities here, both with the economy, the businesses that we have, as well as businesses that are coming? So, the idea is to work with local stakeholders, businesses, and then thought leaders to investigate that. And there are lots of examples around the Bay Area to draw from. So, another quick overview, I apologize for rushing through that, but we'll take some questions, and then I'll also acknowledge that there are four items for tonight, and that if you want to adopt the climate action plan, we have to start by adopting the addendum to the general plan 2020. We've done addendums before to that general plan. The original one was, there was an addendum made to have our first greenhouse gas reduction strategy, which this is as well, incorporate that into the general plan so that precedent's been set. And then, the environmental review that Christine did for us showed no negative consequences in the environment, only positive effects, so thank you.
Thanks for your report, and we're going to request you be first on the agenda next year, just for the record. Any questions? Anyone from the public wish to address this? Phil.
Good evening. Almost good morning.
Almost.
Bill Kearney, Sustainable San Rafael. This, you know, we enthusiastically support this. It's a great bit of work, and it's gone on for, what, a year and a half or so? And this can be really a landmark night for San Rafael in, in adopting this plan. I, I did want to also, we also wanted to urge you particularly to aggressively move forward with the two-year priority items that Cory has just gone through. And this is kind of a familiar formula at this point. It's 100% greenhouse gas-free electricity. It's then using that electricity in more efficient ways in our buildings and moving those buildings towards being all-electric homes and businesses. It's promoting proactively electric vehicles, and it's mandating green cart use basically for organic waste. And another one that's very important now is to undertake a community-based adaptation process, addressing wildfire as we've been, as the city has been doing, but also sea level rise, working with the county, et cetera. It's interesting that, you know, finally, climate's beginning to get a little attention nationally and in political circles, and it's, you'll, you'll find in those discussions pretty much the, the five things that I just mentioned. So, it's really, you know, makes me proud to be part of a community that, in fact, is leading the way in this very important progress that we've got, got to make. These clearly, the, the next 10 years are crucial, as many scientists around the world have told us, in addressing these intensifying impacts that we're experiencing from climate change. So, I want to urge you to adopt and to implement these measures as rapidly as possible. I do want to acknowledge those in the room who have stayed to support this, and, and also a couple who have, several who have not. I started off here today with almost half the board of Sustainable San Rafael. It's kind of dwindled. My wife, Tamara Peters, Chair of Brazilian Neighborhoods, was here for a while.
She was.
And she, her picture, there she is. And Carleen Cullen from Drive Clean Marin was here earlier. I think everybody else is still in the room, and I really appreciate that. I'm not sure if any are going to be speaking in addition. Thank you very much.
Phil, thanks for all the work you've done on this. And by the way, you have been reappointed, just for the record.
As Citizen of the Year, or as a?
No, no, it's an inside.
He deserves that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Chris Yalatas. I'm the founder and of VenturePad. We started about two years ago to support entrepreneurs here in the county, and we've got about 500 solepreneurs and businesses that are using our services, so we feel that we really appreciate your, your support. So, I'm speaking on the part of the chamber, as well as a lot of the entrepreneurs here in the county, to support the climate action plan. I had an opportunity to review all of the, the Chamber's nominations for Green Business of the Year, and I was very proud to see the city step up and, and tout itself as a, a great enterprise for sustainability. So, I applaud Cory's effort to come up and, and pitch, and I know the chamber was very enthusiastic, and the Green Committee was very enthusiastic about your direction, so I wanted to acknowledge that. I've had a chance to work with Drawdown Marin, and this is a leading, this is leading the county. It's, it's actually a map, I think, even for the county's efforts. So, I think you're, you're leading not only other municipalities, but the, but the chamber also, or the, the county. A couple of observations that we're finding going through this process. One is, we need to fund the, the funding capacity of this two-year plan. So, whether it be revolving loan funds, or green bonds, or green banks, certainly research capacity to help Cory with grant research. These are all things we're finding, at least Drawdown Marin, which is a, you know, a big, big ambition. Need to make sure that, that, you know, we help on the, on the fundraising side. The second thing is leveraging partners. So, we've identified about 300 climate entities, climate advocate entities here in the county. So, let's make sure that we're not, you know, sort of reinventing the wheel. We leverage their efforts, we piggyback on them. And then, lastly, we just wanted to support the two-year priorities. So, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Who, who won that green award by?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you all did.
Oh, really?
This city of San Rafael. Yeah, I kind of, I lost the punchline, sorry. Buried the lead, sorry. Well, thanks again.
Thank you. Kiki. I won't have any hard questions for you like that.
Oh, thank God. I don't know how you do it. I'm having low blood sugar. Kiki Laporta, Sustainable Marin this time, and I want to recall 10 years ago, almost exactly 10 years ago, when this body passed the original Climate Change Action Plan in the city of San Rafael, and I had the privilege of being part of the presentation to council, and we were very enthusiastically received. And I want to thank Kate Cullen for her leadership in that original effort in 2009, and on the ongoing attention of your council and your staff to what must be done. We're all accolades tonight, and I intended to only be accolades tonight, but I want to remind us all that we are in a climate emergency, and the time for incremental measures has really passed, so we need to be moving quickly. I want to thank Christine O'Rourke and Cory Bitoff for the Climate Change Action Plan. I sit on the Fairfax Climate Action Committee now, and we are working with your template, and thank you for that, and thank you for your work. And I also want to connect the dots a little bit. Everything is connected to everything else, and we talked earlier about jobs and housing and displacement, and the kinds of jobs that we have, and what they pay, and what it costs to live here. And just remember that those people who are displaced, who don't have a lot of money, still have jobs in this county, and how do they get here? And think about that 62% of transportation emissions that we really need to take a chunk out of. So, please also consider adding to your toolkit some work with our transportation authorities in this county to get better and more frequent and more convenient public transit. Thank you very much. Thank you for your efforts. Really, it's leadership, and that's what we need.
Then, thanks for your comments.
My name is Belle Cole, and I'm with Organizing for Action in Marin and, and Leadership and Lead on Climate. I have a somewhat different perspective, which is that, that the plan is such a model. Cory mentioned that, but it is. And some of us who do activist work, raising awareness of climate change, working with activist groups who want to make this an issue, to raise the stakes, to get people understanding it, use what you're doing here as good messaging, and it has proven to be effective because, because there are very specific things that we can talk about that can be done, instead of simply talking about why there's such a crisis, which gets more and more severe. And so, not only can you look at what the county's doing, but look at what we are doing here, and the statistics that Christine came up with are, are really, I've never seen such statistics before. They're really amazing. So, it's useful as we carry this beyond the town of, of San Rafael. And so, and I also wanted to say that part of the way it's been working is that the young people and the students we've been working with have taken this message, and we're working with many of them, and it's, it's very exciting, and I'm sure you're going to hear more of them. And so, thank you, thank you. It's a terrific plan.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Speaking thereof, good evening.
Hello. My name is Charlotte Cameron, and I'm here with Anna, and we're both students in the Marin School of Environmental Leadership. And primarily, I would like to thank everyone here, and Cory, and the whole community for including us in this process. I think student participation and just making sure you include all the members of your community is really important in everything, especially in climate change. And I just really, really want to ask you to please adopt this. I know it hasn't been adopted yet, and we've seen a lot of support, but this is really important. And I just want to emphasize how climate change really is connected to everything that we see, and it will make all of our problems worse if we don't address it, and all of our problems better if we do address it. The housing we've been talking about tonight, if we don't address climate change, sea level rise is going to make housing in the canal 10 times worse than it is right now. So, climate change is really important, and I'd like to say thank you for helping to address it in this way, so.
And thank you for your involvement. It's great. Thanks. And thanks for sticking it out this late hour to everybody.
Hi, I'm Anna Ostrowski. I'm a senior at the Marin School of Environmental Leadership. So, I'm just going to echo Charlotte. Two years ago, I stood in front of you and proposed that youth be involved in this conversation. So, I'm really grateful that we've been along for this ride, and I hope that in the next time this is opened again, which it will need to be at some point, because we need to continue to work at this, that youth will continue to be involved. So, I just want you to know that your whole community is behind this decision, behind this plan, especially the youth. We saw that last month with the climate strike. We really support this, and... We really support this, and will continue to be here, making sure it is on the table, so thank you.
And thanks again for your involvement, thanks so much for sticking it out.
Evening. Mayor Phillips and council members, I'm Stuart Siegel, I am a longtime resident of San Rafael and a climate change scientist at San Francisco State University, and a proud parent alumnus of MarinCell, graduated senior now, and I'm very happy to see what the city's been doing, and my focus really has been on the adaptation side of the equation, and one of the things I want to kind of bring your attention to and advocate for ultimately in the steps the city goes forward with, is working on adaptation planning throughout the whole city of San Rafael, that I led a, getting a federal grant which we're implementing right now to work at China Camp State Park with Supervisor Damon Conley, State Parks, many of your city staff, as well as county staff, to tackle the low road through China Camp, a very stakeholder, community-based process. One of the issues that, that the community has raised there is it's not just China Camp, if you want to drive around, it's through Peacock Cap to downtown San Rafael and all the way down to the Richmond Bridge, and it's, it's connected, and so if the functions of people, what you want to see happen for the city, the protection it gives, it's not just all these pieces, it's tackling the whole equation. And so I really want to advocate for the city taking the leadership to work on, on the city side of the whole equation, and link that together with the work the county's doing, we're doing with China Camp State Park to tackle the flooding on the road out there that happens quite often now. Thank you very much.
You bet, thanks.
Hi again, Catherine De Silva-Chain, and I want to thank you all very, very much for this, this environmental work. I've been, was, was one of the original members of Sustainable San Rafael, and right now I'm very active with the elders' climate action, and with Marin Interfaith Climate Action. So that's another group here in Marin County that many people aren't aware of, but we're trying to get the churches and the synagogues and faith communities to be more active in, in helping people to realize the climate crisis and to eliminate carbon emissions, and, and I, I gave you the paper on climate on carbon offsets. This is something where, it's very nice, easy to look away from, but truly, in our work here, it, it might be easy to feel proud on what we're doing, but we are giving back, we have to give back. We have to work to make it a less, less of a carbon cesspool that we're, we're emitting, and, and look at our work as limiting that, the, those carbon emissions, and also contributing to bringing them down, bringing, bringing the carbon down, in all the ways that we've talked about, but many of us too need to look at in, in our, in, in the donations that we make. And so I wanted to push for carbon offsets, and please, I'd like you to read those suggestions of that, that Reverend Doug has done, has given us, and show that some, there's carbon offsets, and there, there's carbon offsets, and it's very important to get the right ones, to get the big, the bang for our bucks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, anyone else? Close and come back, further comments, questions, observations?
I'd be happy to make some comments, and then we can, you guys can chime in after. First of all, huge thank you to Cory and Christine for leading this whole effort, and also to Christine Alilbich, who was providing the liaison to the rest of the staff, so really this was the absolute A-team, and I am not surprised we have a model Climate Change Action Plan. It was wonderful to work with staff, but also you heard from the people that helped build it. The student voice was incredibly important, thank you for staying, I saw Charlotte had to go. The comments that you made during the meetings kind of gave the rest of us pause, you know, that you brought your fresh perspective, so thank you for that. We had incredible experts that showed up to the meeting, and really, it has, it's a great document. I thought the first one was good, I helped chair that one, and I think this one is even better, so obviously big supportive of it. And I just wanted to reiterate a few things Cory said, these are some state mandates that are coming down, it's not like, oh, we can maybe do it or maybe not, we are mandated, we actually, we need to be making these reductions, and as we all know, the city's a small percentage of the emissions, and it's how do we engage the community? The online tool, all the community engagement part, that is how we're going to get there. You know, the education piece is huge. When I looked at all the comments from the online survey that you did, and there were pages and pages of that, education came through, and it's really everything from, why are we doing this? Well, we're doing this because we need to, it's the right thing to do, all those good reasons, to, hey, I'm not really sure how to recycle or compost, and again, you talked about the contamination that happens in the sorting bin. So there's a lot of education that has to, to go out there, a lot of conversation, and our partners that have stayed here this evening, we, we can't do it on our own, you know, the five of us up here, plus the staff, we're not the ones that are going to be able to make this effective. It's what are those partnerships and collaborations with our nonprofits and our community-based organizations, and we're going to be working together on, for the next, forever, to, to get where we need to go, and to work with those who also aren't in the room, for people that don't understand how important this is and how it will affect our community. So just wanted to say those few comments, and I'd be happy when we're ready to start making motions, if there's others that want to comment.
Well, let's see, Mayor, what's your name?
Nope, I'm ready for motions.
John, go.
Okay. All righty. Make a motion to adopt addendum number four to the Certified San Rafael General Plan, EIR.
Second.
Move and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Cullen.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries five zero, next.
I move that we adopt the resolution, adopting the Climate, Climate Change Action Plan twenty thirty.
Second.
Move and second, roll call.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Cullen.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries five zero, next.
I move that we accept the annual report on the greenhouse gas inventory.
Second.
Move and second, roll call.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Cullen.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries five zero, and?
Okay, and I make a motion that we accept the report on the two-year work plan priorities for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Second.
Move and second, roll call.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Cullen.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries five zero. We'll move on to council members' reports. Any council members' reports?
I will save mine for our next meeting.
Share your own.
I will save for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything, what else? That is it. We are.